August 21st recess meeting of the Board of Alderman, we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please, followed by invocation by Chaplain Middleton and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray again. Part of your word tells us in Psalm 19 that the heavens give glory to your name, Father of the skies, to your great work and your hand, and Father, we thank you for this today, this Tuesday, and a good day in spin, and Father, we praise your name for that. So, Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come and meet together this evening. Father, we thank you for our Board of Alderman, we thank you for our mayor, our city officials, God knows who, day in and day out, Father, leading the city of Starkville. Father, we just pray for direction, wisdom, and knowledge. Father, thank you again for watching over us as a Jesus. Amen.
All right, good evening, everyone. We'd like to thank you for joining us this evening. Our first order of business will be approval of the official agenda with the consented items. Do we have any changes to the official agenda? Alderman Sistrunk.
There is an item at the table that I would like to add and add to the consent agenda if possible. It is the reinsurance that we need for our employee health insurance programs. It has to be signed by August 24th in order for us to get the current rates that they have proposed to us. There are no changes from one year to the next, and Attorney Latimer has reviewed it and found it acceptable.
Okay, do you want to put that under Board Business, item E?
That would be perfect.
And you're asking for it to be placed on consent?
Yes.
Okay, first, do we have any objections to it being placed on the agenda, item E? Seeing none in consent, any objections to consent?
And Mayor, just to be clear, it falls under the current contract, correct?
Yes.
All right, so item E would be, how am I titling that? Authorizing the mayor to execute Liberty Insurance Underwriters, Inc. Application for Excess Loss Insurance.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any further changes to the agenda?
May I be recognized?
On the note.
Under, excuse me, I've lost my place here. Under Finance and Administration?
Yes, sir.
Number three.
Okay.
Could we add that to consent, please?
Okay. Any objections to adding item number three, which is consideration of approval for the Fleet Corps fuel cards, to consent? Okay, seeing none, we'll show that it's being consent. Anyone else? Any further changes, revisions? All right, seeing none, if we would, could we have approval of the official agenda with the consent? Oh, I'm sorry. We do have an item under executive session personnel that I understand can be pulled. So, with that change, anyone objection, objecting to personnel being pulled from that? All right, seeing none. Then with those changes, do I have a motion to approve the official agenda with the consented agenda?
Those programs, Mayor.
As advised, Alderman. Little, I have a motion, Alderman Miller, I have a second. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Much serious, thank you. All right, I will read the consented items. Consideration of the minutes of the July 17th, 2018 recess meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi. Consideration of the minutes of the July 30th, 2018, 9:00 a.m., special call meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi. Consideration of the minutes of the July 30th, 2018, 9:30 a.m., special call meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi. Under Mayor's Business, we have consideration of authorizing October County Humane Society annual flyer outlining the City of Starkville animal control orders insert to the October Starkville Utilities Bill. Under, under Planning, we have item four, which is consideration of advertising to fill the vacancy in Ward Two for the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to end July 30, I'm sorry, June 30th, 2020. Under Courts, we have permission for Court Clerk Shalonda Sykes to attend mandatory training in Jackson, Mississippi, September 12th through September 14th, at no cost to the city. Under Engineering, we have request approval to advertise the 2018 roadway base and surfacing program, project number 18036. Under Finance and Administration, we have request acceptance of July financial reports. We have the consideration of approval to apply for Fleet Corps fuel cards to be used for fuel purchases in city vehicles when out of town. Under Human Resources, we have request authorization to advertise for a processing clerk in the Community Development Department. Two is request authorization to advertise for an office manager in the Starkville Utilities Department. Under Parks, we have consideration of the approval of the Facility Use Agreement with Starkville Christian Home Educators for use of athletic fields for their football, soccer, and volleyball programs. Two is consideration for the approval of the Facility Use Agreement with Starkville Academy for use of an athletic field for their varsity girls' soccer program. Under Police Department, we have request authorization to enter into an agreement with the Mississippi Office of Highway Safety for the fiscal year 2019 DUI enforcement in the amount of $80,637.60 with no match requirement. Number two is request authorization to enter into an agreement with the Mississippi Office of Highway Safety for the fiscal year 19 Police Traffic Safety Grant in the amount of $15,400 with no match requirement. Item three is request authorization for Corporal Brandon Lovelady to attend the News Media Training for Narcotics Commanders and Law Enforcement Leaders Class, September 18th to 20th, 2018, in Memphis, Tennessee, in an amount not to exceed $200. Request authorization for approval for professional consulting with MOC, Ms., MS, LEAC assessment in an amount not to exceed $450. It's Mizliac, would that be right, Chief? Under Utilities, we have number one, request authorization to advertise for bids for the new Southwest Starkville Primary Substation site work. And number three is request authorization to proceed as an emergency purchase repair for the Curry Street well, which includes replacing all of the pipe column, oil tubing, and pump shaft with the bake and installation of the new bearings required, with Donald Smith for $69,167 per Mississippi Code Section 31-7-13 sub-K. And that an emergency exists such that the delay incidented giving opportunity for competitive bidding would be detrimental to the interest of the governing authority. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
There's the last one you just put on.
I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry.
The insurance.
Oh, yes, I apologize. Thank you so much for calling my attention to that. Consideration of authorizing the mayor to execute the Liberty Insurance Underwriters, Inc. Application for Excess Loss Insurance. I put down E and then didn't write it down. Thank you, okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir, my pleasure. All right, next we will have announcements and comments, and at this point, I don't have any announcements. I think we have, yep, I don't have any announcements that I can think of, so unless somebody's got some, does the Board have any comments? Board of Alderman have any comments? Anyone? Anyone? All right, seeing none, we'll move to Citizen comments. Do we have anyone who would like to come up and speak to the Board? You have three minutes, and you may, I will be timing it, and you may say whatever you would like to, to us. Well, let's be nice, within reason. Mr. Turner.
Good evening to the mayor and board, my name's Alderman, Javon Tunnenboy, seven.
Good to see you.
To the mayor, to Alderman Perkins, to Alderman Vaughn, to the police chief, to the NAACP president. Been real stressful, but gonna make it. Old school songs, Jerry Butler, the only strong spot. Byron Gump, nobody wants you when you're down there. We have a situation at the second night on 25th, we don't have a turn signal for some reason, coming from high school onto the intersection, the, and don't have a turn signal coming out dirt cheap. And law enforcement and NAACP, we try hard to keep hatred out of Bulldog Country, but we do the best we can before we know, hoping that it don't arrive. We had a situation last Thursday, someone that didn't live in Pecan Acres, 19-year-old, tried to take advantage of an 11-year-old child that was waiting on the bus. Very disturbing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Okay, do we have anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Taylor.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
My name is Chris Taylor, President of Tappahawk County NAACP, Ward Seven. Now, a few things going on. The, number one, the governor set up a task force to study the proper citizen or different, what do you call it, Tony Perkins, or?
The citizen.
Different citizen for the same crime.
Okay.
Okay, so what the NAACP gonna take on is the city's and the county's budget, because what's happening is, with the state reducing the money they're giving to us, to the cities and counties, well, they don't want these cities to take advantage of the citizen by increasing, well, we know we've got to increase taxes, but come on, don't increase that much. Same thing with writing tickets, don't write that many. You know, some areas, ain't that right, Alderman Walker? No, that's a joke between me and him. But, but you know, that's what's going on. And also, what disturbing is, I attend the school board meeting, board supervisor in this room, and last night, for the people who attended that meeting, they think that this ambulance service is a joke. You have people from the hospital saying that, hey, they didn't get notified about helicopters coming in, so, hey, that two or three minutes of helicopter flying around up there is life and death to that person that needing it. So, I don't know what the deal is, but you three gonna have to get together and talk. I know them lawyers already got together, but from a citizen point of view, it really looked bad last night. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to make citizen's comments?
I'm gonna break this out, so I'm gonna say, good evening to everybody that's up here on the, on the internet here, I'm gonna break this out, just say, I love all of you telling about yourself there. I got a few concerns here that's concerning me here in the city, and every time I pick up a paper, it's like we got these people from Parkland Recreation that did this, and they did this, and they ML, and they did, we know that. Well, we got a lot of other people that has done, have done even worse, and it had come up after being in the newspaper every day. I'm sorry that they needed it, it was a crime, yeah, we know it was a crime, but be careful, 'cause if we go back on the footsteps and some of them others got away with it, and some didn't. And then we keep putting it in the newspaper like it's something. Let's be careful about what we do. This is my money, your money, and everybody else's money, and we know it, but be careful about how we go back and train folks, and then enough, you can go to prison, but this side can get away with it, and I know you know what I mean, one side, the other side. Also, Mayor, I don't want you to take on too many responsibilities, now you, you know, some go, some come, but Mayor, you the mayor, let the department head make some money, please. Please.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, they won't tell, you know how to go, but you know, I'm gonna say anything. We still have to do anything, uh, wildly, that's rolling the air, probably about the outskirts, rolling the air, talking about outskirts of it. All of the restaurants over here, everything else over here, interest somebody to come over to the other side, okay? Just make it, you know, make it fair, let's do what we do fairly, okay? Like I said, I'm speaking to everybody, not only my, Alderman, but he get a hell full every day, and you know, I'm just saying, let's be fair. Let's be fair about what we do. Love you.
Thank you, Ms. Isaac.
Now, to speak to that, I say, Ms. Isaac, that the mayor did take on some obligations with the resignation of the Community Development Director, and then I think you've already drafted some things, and that Human Resource Manager has drafted some job descriptions and some tweaking of that, and then we'll turn around, I think, in, what, you say, two meetings, we'll probably advertise?
Well, I'm hoping that we will put that before the Board on the fourth and advertise, and then hopefully we'll have somebody in by the end of October, 'cause believe me, I've done this once before, and I just soon on, so I'll be just as ready for somebody to come in and take that role.
And also, Mr. Taylor, that, yeah, there were some contractual obligations with Pafford that I think need to get hammered out, and I read that article this morning, I was not at the meeting, but that's pretty interesting, I've heard some comments. I think anytime you get a new service into a town, there's gonna be some things that have to be adjusted, and anytime you deal with the life and safety aspects, such as an ambulance service, it takes a heightened awareness of something that may not be a life and death type, type business, so, yeah, there's some things that we're looking at, and I know there's gonna be some meetings I would assume that, you know, obviously some things are gonna have to be worked out, but again, I've heard some pretty good comments about them, I've heard some negative, you're gonna hear both sides, I think. Sometimes when I take a comment, I always look at who's giving it, because if, you know, it may have a weight to it, or take it with a grain of salt, but I do think that they're good, so far, they're running good response times, so I don't know, but we may need to have some kind of quarterly update for the first little while, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Little.
Since Mr. Taylor brought that up, I'll speak to that as well. Mr. Taylor, Pafford, those three brand-new ambulances that we have now in the city responding to city calls, our time, response time has decreased significantly, and the chief can speak to that, but each one of those is also equipped with a computer-operated machine that gives CPR, it's about a $16,000 piece of equipment, and each one of them has those. We did not have those in the other ambulances, they do not have them now in the county, and those CPR machines don't get tired like a person sitting there trying to give it would, and it can regulate itself, it's computerized, and I'll just soon take my chances if I need it, you know, for an aisle where somebody give me CPR than a person trying to do that, 'cause it's just not gonna happen. But, yes, there's probably some growing pains, but I don't know that we're getting both, you know, there's two sides to every story, and we just need to delve, delve off a little deeper and figure out what's going on, because I don't think we're hearing both sides. You know, there was some opposition for us going this route, and this, we didn't reinvent the wheel, this is something that's done all over the state, this is not new. It's new to some, it's not new to me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else, anyone else wanting to make citizen comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll close it. We have no public appearances tonight, we do have two public hearings. First public hearing is on the proposed fiscal year 2019 budget and proposed tax levies for the City of Starkville. Before I open it as a public hearing, anyone on the Board wishing to speak to this? Okay, no one? All right, I will open it as a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak about the fiscal year 2019 budget and the proposed tax levy now would be the opportunity. Anyone? If you would identify yourself, please, sir.
Good evening, Andrew Stevens, Ward Three, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Honorable Alderman. I'm here just to provide a brief comment in favor of the proposed budget and tax levies. I just want to make the comment that I believe changes to taxes should be deliberate and measured, which is what I see in the work of the Budget Committee, and for that, I'm thankful. I'm glad to see this investment in our community and look forward to the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I will close it as a public hearing, and that will be the first of two. We'll have one.
I'll just go add a couple of comments.
I was just saying, this is our first of two, we'll have the next one on September the fourth, and now, Alderman, Carter?
Yes, ma'am, and I want to do this in a public setting, Alderman Sistrunk cannot talk, and I want you to correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause I'm gonna kinda ask him, I hear a lot of opening questions, you know, as you go throughout the community, and a lot of constituents when I ask some questions, but, and I'll tell you some things personally, I see wrong with the budget, or maybe I have a different take on it, but, one, and you and I spoke this day, I appreciate the phone call we had. You know, the 50,000 for the safe, for the Smart Bus, and you and I spoke, and I know you had comments for the pair transit, which I think is a phenomenal service, I don't see the rider, ridership numbers on my side of town that may be, you know, justify what we see on these graphs and the hundreds of thousands. I have sat at different locations, and you hear comments from bus drivers, I haven't picked up a person in two days, you know, I think, I just don't, I guess my forethought on this is, I don't wanna be, I know we have a case studies in big towns of, it's not really a, it's not a service that's a moneymaker in any town, when you, when you work for 50 cents a ride, or, I mean, it doesn't pay the diesel that, for that bus to sit there. So, I understand that it is providing a valuable service, especially from a pair transit standpoint, so I can justify that, but I don't, I guess my question is, would this 50,000 a year allocation lead into 100 or 200, or is this a more flat? I know we've done in-kind services through, through the pads and through the bus stops and things like that, but is this something that you say incrementally increasing over the years?
I would say just in general, cost on everything increased over the years, so I'm not gonna promise you that that won't go up over time. It is used for grant match, and that grant match has been funded to date by parking and transit on MSU's campus. They have asked for contributions in the past, and we've never quite been able to get there, but it is, it is something that we need to begin to recognize our responsibility for that service. The, I don't have the ridership numbers with me, and it was pretty surprising, the number of pair transit riders, do you remember?
Ma'am, oh, I do not know the number, but I just, I actually had a text from, former Alderman, I'm sorry, and I've asked him if he'll come make a presentation to the Board, so we can have not only pair transit numbers, but numbers associated with the Smart Bus system itself. So, I'm sure he'll be willing to do that, and that will give you some.
That's fine, I just.
And I would like to say, too, that there are people who use, use the Smart Bus system in addition to the trans, pair transit, and we have people here tonight because they have access to that. So, it is, it is something that we're growing into as a community.
True, and then, you know, first of all, I'm gonna back up, 'cause I didn't properly, thank you for the work that you've done, and anyone else associated with this, I know you've put in a bunch of hours, so, and this is, you know, obviously nothing personal, but this is something we need to discuss in a public setting. Second thing I've heard, and may I have, I may have issues with, is, well, it's kinda, it's kind of a timing thing, it's the fact that we have litigation ongoing to industrial park, and I believe it might have been you that said that the pie's only so big, and that's a huge allocation for the Canada City to both, put up 7 million apiece. If that lawsuit, if we were losing that lawsuit, and this may be a city attorney question, could that money be used for a parked and wrecked type endeavor?
Yeah, I can take this one. No, it cannot.
Okay.
It, those bonds were very limited in purpose, and, and so we cannot use those for, for anything else. There is a clause that will allow us to pay, to stop our expenditures and, and pay back the unspent portions of the bonds, but, but as far as use of those bonds, very limited.
How far along are we into that 7 million that we've already used?
Oh, my gosh, I wasn't prepared to answer any questions tonight.
You can wait till next time, people take notes and.
Well, and I can answer some of that, and not to the exact dollar figures, but we have, the pad is prepared for the TVA, they're, they're moving forward with that. The water tower funds have been received, the land obviously was purchased, so, and the purchase of the land was the major piece of that at this point. The others have been grants that have come from both ATMS, TVA, and MDOT, so the land purchase is the biggest, biggest expenditure at this point, expenditure at this point in time, 'cause we haven't put any infrastructure in yet.
So, you're thinking if something with, with a lawsuit, that we could basically just stop the process and then pay back, is that what you're seeing?
If there was the political will to do that.
Or we could use them for any other purpose.
Well, we'd pay back those other bonds, and it would just increase our debt capacity. It would require issuing a new bond.
Well, and I believe that the lawsuit at this point, the Supreme Court has turned down, the lawsuit is now going back to the Court of Appeals, so we're probably in the October timeframe to get this resolved.
Ma'am, just a couple of things, just to flesh out what Alderman Sistrunk said about the clawback provision. The paragraph in the bond resolution states that if an order ever comes down from a court that's not appealable, so that goes with what the mayor just said, I mean, if the Mississippi Supreme Court enters an order that says that the case is over and that the bond purposes are frustrated as a matter of law, then and only then can the city clawback and redeem whatever is left. But that would be the trigger, an order that's non-appealable by a court of highest jurisdiction. And to just address the mayor's timeline, you know, you, we, there's not a rule that says when the Mississippi Court of Appeals has to rule, and so we're optimistic that it would come sooner rather than later, but I think a good conservative timeframe would be by year's end, hopefully, but we don't even know that. They rule when they rule.
Yes, we do know that, no.
Ma'am, I recognize.
Let me make sure, Alderman, Carter?
Just a few more, few more questions. So, we're talking about parks and red, and while we're staying on that subject, so we earmarked, you know, 440,000 this year, and this is a reass, and then, correct me where I'm wrong, but I was understanding, is it 700,000 worth of new money we have through?
No, you're close, but not quite there. 450 to 500 of new money because of revaluation, the additional money that you're referencing comes from the proposed tax increase.
Okay, yes, so I, I left the last meeting with some figures, and I've even seen where former Alderman had commented in the paper, and everybody's, you know, got their different. So, that was in the paper today, but, yeah, so the list as far as the parks, did you bring that, where Mr. Logan may come, of what the 440,000 will actually target and address, 'cause that's where I'm getting a lot of questions, is, hey, that's a, that's a big, that's almost a half a million dollars, so if you wanna come up, that's, that's fine.
And while he's coming up, while he's coming up, may I just say that the emphasis on parks is one that spans two boards now. The previous board was looking at parks improvements, this board has continued those discussions, and a big part of all of this is not just what we might do in terms of new parks, but maintaining our current parks and making sure that they're up to the standards that we want them to be.
Correct, and the list that we've kinda been discussing, it's got a lot of needs on there, and the interesting part of that need, those needs is while, the needs themselves go upwards of, well beyond that 440,000, 450,000 mark, and that's on top of, you know, our already, you know, what we have budgeted and the different projects we'll do throughout the year, so that's just, that's additional, so, yeah, there's certainly a lot of potential projects, and I'm happy to give examples, but I mean, the bottom line is, there's, there's just a ton of needs, you know, to get our parks, you know, where we wanna see them. We want people to see the improvements we make and, and believe in, you know, that, that our department and the city is committed to those parks and improving what we have. So, yeah, there's certainly plenty of examples I can, I can throw your way, but the bottom line, there's, there's a ton of needs.
Well, I was just gonna say, what's a couple of big-ticket items on that list? If some, I'm gonna say somebody.
I can tell you that, Travis Outlaw roof for one, and then the soccer field drainage issue for another.
Yeah.
Those are two of the largest ticket items.
We've got a drainage issue at the soccer field, some piping issues, it's upwards of 50,000 as an example, the Travis Outlaw roof's probably 40,000, I mean, those are, those are just, again, rough estimates, but those are some, some bigger examples of just things that could be done.
You got equipment needs on there?
Equipment, not as much focused on equipment, you know, it's, you know, a lot of, you obviously wanna address public safety, accessibility, things that we can do and purchase to increase efficiency, better use of our man-hours, and things like that.
What are some more things on your list, sir?
There's plenty, again, plenty of potential projects, gating, security issues at the parks, whether it's lighting, putting gates at parks, you know, LED security lights on the Outlaw Center was another relatively small example, resurfacing of outdoor basketball courts, long overdue, you know, those are, again, it goes on and on, and I could go on as long as you want, but, yeah, there's, there's plenty of needs out there.
And the reason is, you know, if, if you're spending the taxpayer dollars, they're gonna wanna know where the money's going, and I get a lot of questions, well, what is it? You're just seeing this figure in the paper, and so, it's kinda what, I appreciate you coming up, at least.
And another element I wanted to point out is just in talking through, you know, the potential projects, I mean, public safety is always number one, we certainly wanna to do. want to, to do some projects and prioritize projects that are, that are visible, you know, we want people to be able to see the improvements, but make sure that they're obviously needed, um, so yeah, there's, they'll, if, depending on what happens, obviously, there, there'd be a lot that people would see, physically see in the parks, that, you know, no matter what park they went to, they would, they would see the improvement.
And I've already seen a big improvement in about the last year and a half, two years, so.
Thank you.
Keep it up.
Um, and, and just specifically, uh, from a point of view, I'll, I'll go to Vice Mayor Perkins, and then back to Alderman Little, but the reality is, if we don't take care of what we've got, we'll be, we'll be hard pressed to make the case that we need to do something more. And I think we all want to do the, the larger stroke, the larger picture of the cornerstone park, but we've got to take care of what we've got, or else we, nobody will be able to make the case that we deserve to go bigger and better, so. All right, Vice Mayor Perkins.
Uh, yeah, ma'am, just wanted to ask the city attorney just for, um, some clarity on a comment the mayor made, she said the Supreme Court kicked it back, I mean, that was just a little small talk without an explanation, what, what, what did she mean by that, lawyer?
Uh, the Supreme Court declined to take the appeal, and they transferred it to the Mississippi Court of Appeals, which is their prerogative.
Oh yeah, well, that's, that's standard anyway, in other words, when an appeal is filed, they'll decide whether it's going to go to the Court of Appeals, whether they'll keep it, but that don't necessarily mean they won't get, take cert on it.
That's correct.
Right, okay, I, I was unsure, I'll make sure I had not missed something, but that's just a usual procedure.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you.
Sorry, I used slang there, I apologize. Alderman Little.
I just would like to remind everyone, the Parks and Rec Comprehensive Plan spoke to the number one issue, and everyone that was polled and sat in on those community meetings, that maintenance and neglect were some of the biggest issues, um, that they saw in the conditions of the fields, the bathrooms, the facilities, the roof, the fencing, and parking, and so on and so on. And if, if, if the board is not willing to make those capital improvements, and spend roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and make those investments in our parks to bring our parks just up to speed, it's, it's like a house, if you, if you neglect your house, and, and you put off painting, next thing you've got rotten wood, or you put off doing different things, it's going to cost a whole lot more if you neglect to do it and keep them up to speed, and, and we have, um, we as a city have been guilty of that, I believe, in not keeping our parks, uh, parks up to par, and, uh, if we're not willing to reinvest in our parks to the tune of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we don't need to be talking about spending money on tournament quality park, we need to move on to something else if, if we're going to choke on that. Um, I think there's something that we need to do, and, um, if, if not, we need to start talking about some other things other than parks, in my opinion. As to the roof, I think that's a metal roof, if I recall, it's not a built-up roof, I think it's just a metal roof over there at the Sportsplex. We, we probably want to get a roofer to look at it, I don't know that it's going to need a roof replacement, more so as the little rubber grommets that go under these screws about every ten years, they dry rot, and they need to be replaced, so that may be something as simple as getting someone up there and, and putting new grommets in, and solving the leak, because the metal should not need replacing unless, if, if it's got wind damage, it's an insurance claim, so that, we need to look at it from that regard, so probably just need to get a roofing company to check it out and see where we're at on that, and go from there.
I think we have gotten an estimate, um, part of the problem is it's flat, and a flat roof is always a little problematic than when it's got some pitch to it, so, yes, you're absolutely correct. Alderman Sistrunk, I see your hand.
I'm, I'd like to echo, um, things that I've heard on, on both sides here about the, about the parks, um, it is something that I think the, the, the previous board and this one do have a, a commitment to, um, addressing, and, and that is a big part of the budget, but there are other things that are accounted for in that budget, and that's, um, taking care of some personnel issues, making sure that we have dollars for promotions within the police department, something that's a little behind, um, behind schedule, the, um, chip seal projects that we agreed to advertise for tonight, so there are other things other than parks in there, and these are, these are things that are spread throughout the city, um, so it's not, um, isolated to a particular area. Um, I'd also like to point out that the, the proposed tax increase is one point oh five mils, which is, um, a relatively small amount. When, when you get your tax bill, if your house is assessed at seventy-five thousand dollars, um, and that gets converted into the amount of taxes that are due, you're talking about less than ten dollars, we're really talking about seven dollars and fifty cents, um, of, a year, um, that, that that tax increase would result in. If you're over sixty-five or disabled, and you have that same seventy-five thousand dollar homeowner's house with, with homestead exemption, you'd, you'd see no increase in your taxes, and the numbers will go up rightably, depending on how much, how much your, your property is worth, but it's, it's a relatively minor investment in our community, and it is an investment in our community.
Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we will, uh, move on to the public hearing, second public hearing, uh, this is the second in the list of our current public hearings, a public hearing in consideration of appeal of the denial of rezoning eighteen dash zero five, request to rezone two lots located three hundred Louisville and three fourteen Scale Street from R two to R five, with the parcel numbers one oh two B dash zero zero dash zero five one point zero zero, and one oh two B dash zero zero dash zero five two point zero zero. And just as, as a point of clarification, this has been, well, Ms. Brown, I'll let you come make that request.
That's all right.
Come on up, you would identify yourself, please?
Thank you. I'm Julie Brown, I'm the attorney for Fowler Construction, well, actually, Louisville Street LLC, and, um, we, um, after meeting with the surveyor and, and refiguring things, we would like to modify our request for rezoning and reappear before the Planning and Zoning with some new information and some, um, uh, better renderings, so we would like to withdraw our request to have the appeal heard tonight, and modify it, and go back before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and downsize our rezoning request to R three.
Okay, all right, thank you. Having, having, uh, called for a public hearing, we will go ahead and have a public hearing, since we have people here, um, but we won't make a, we won't make a presentation since it's going to change, so we'll go ahead and, and have that public hearing, so.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, with, with that in mind, um, I will open it as a public hearing, we will do a for and against, and if there's anyone here who wishes to speak to this matter, um, please come now, I'll give you fifteen minutes on one side and fifteen minutes for the other, if you so, if, if y'all choose to use it, knowing as it stands right now that there is an intent to change the zoning request from an R five to an R three, I believe, and it will go back through the process, so if there's anyone here wishing to come forward and speak about this request, now would be the time. Anyone wishing to speak for the request? Anyone wishing to speak for? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against the request?
Hi, Mayor Board, my name's Jeremy Murdock, I live at five oh two Greens, Greensboro Street, which is really close to this, uh, proposed development. Um, I submitted letters to all of you today that was really detailed, so I won't go through all that, but I think a lot of us in the neighborhood are going to oppose any type of rezoning in that area, just because we don't feel, as the staff report outlined, that there has not been significant change in that area to warrant any kind of zoning, um, zoning change. Uh, the map I produced and sent to y'all, I think it shows that the majority of that neighborhood is single-family detached homes, at least north of the railroad tracks. We feel like that, that railroad track corridor is a good buffer, uh, as you go north toward downtown, to keep that integrity of that neighborhood, single-family detached homes, not anything higher density than we've seen toward the southern end, closer to Highway twelve, I think that starts to, I think we've seen the impact that that has on the southern part of the neighborhoods, how that starts to erode the character of the neighborhood, the integrity of the property values and all that, that's happened along Wood Street, some ends of Gillespie, where we've had these higher-density apartment complexes come in, um, where it starts to really erode the character of the neighborhood, I don't think we can point to any example of that type of development that's happened in a historic neighborhood where that's actually enhanced the neighborhood, I don't see any examples where it's helped the neighborhood, it's only detracted from it, so, glad the third coming back, uh, from this request, but I feel like the neighborhood is going to oppose any type of rezoning for that, for that reason, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Anyone else wishing to speak against?
Good evening, Mayor Board, my name is Joe Fertizzi, I live at five eleven Greensboro Street. Uh, I won't take up a lot of your time, I have submitted y'all a letter, in light of the change of requests, I know that we'll be back to talk about this at another time, don't want to echo everything Jeremy mentioned, but I think it goes along those lines that any zoning request, whether it's an R five, R four, R three, R three A, when you approve that rezoning request, you're stating that there has in fact been a change, you're setting a precedent saying that there is a change that is taking place, and we're going to warrant a rezoning, and we don't feel, first of all, that that change has taken place, and no matter how you change it, uh, once you start getting away from that single-family residential, you are going to be changing the character of that neighborhood, that's a, that's a historic and national and local for part of it, that area, uh, historic district, and changing that's going to dramatically change that. So I think it's something that I would encourage you to do, it also goes along with our comprehensive plan that y'all have worked so hard to put in place and keep updated, where it clearly states that one of the priorities and goals of the city is to maintain the historic areas, historic places, and the unique characters that we have, so we're just asking you to kind of go along with that and continue, uh, keeping that as the single-family use that it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fertizzi. Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing, and we will move to the next item, which is, uh, under Mayor's Business, Presentation and Discussion of the Results of the Annexation Study by Slaughter and Associates. Mr. Slaughter is here, he's come down from Oxford, and appreciate you being with us, and you have the floor, I believe you have a tire point, Joel, are you going to drive for him?
I'm going to be queued up here.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mayor of, of the Board of Alderman, appreciate the opportunity to be here. As, uh, the mayor stated, I'm Mike Slaughter with Slaughter and Associates, and I'm here, uh, to make a, a presentation on our annexation study, just to give you an outline of what I'm going to talk about tonight. Back several weeks ago, I, I came to the, a board meeting, a work session, and made a demographic presentation. Well, tonight, I'm going to go through some of that, I'm going to be a little redundant on that, so you'll be familiar with what we're looking at as far as our annexation study area, and then, uh, I'm going to move into our, what is the Phase Two part of our annexation study, which you haven't heard this information before, what that Phase Two, uh, considers is, is met with all of your department heads, in addition to the Rating Bureau, to determine if there would a need, need for any additional personnel or equipment, and then we will also have, uh, conducted a financial analysis for the general fund on, uh, water, on, uh, revenues and expenditures, and also, uh, worked with Mr. Andrew Nagel, uh, he came up with some water and sewer plans and cost estimates, so I'm going to make, I'm going to present all of that to you tonight. Uh, are there any questions?
And do you have a handout?
I do have some handouts.
Okay. And while we're doing that, I have, apparently I did not hit send, so y'all can, y'all can beat me about the head and shoulders, but I thought that I had mentioned to everyone that MSU, we went into several different meetings with MSU, and, um, they declined to be, uh, annexed, which is, uh, something that they can do, so, um, we are, that, that is not a possibility for us, and however unfortunate I think that is, because I think it would have been a nice way for us to round out our, um, our annexation process, that, um, specifically, we already provide them the majority of services that we would, we either provide them or they provide themselves, and would not, have no interest in us participating in that, um, thank you, that, um, they selected not to, not to participate with us, so, um, I think Mr. Slaughter will, will have said that, but I had fully intended to hit send, and apparently I neglected to do so, so y'all can beat me up verbally or otherwise later on, just not tonight at this particular meeting, please.
Any questions before I move forward?
I'm going to step over here to the maps, and we'll go through the presentation, uh, you can see a small map, uh, of the presentation, but we have the existing city of Starkville shown here in the green, uh, we have, in the salmon color, we have, uh, Area One to the west, southwest of the city of Starkville, small Area Two to the north, uh, Area Three that wraps around the east side and around the southern part of the city, and also, uh, wraps around Mississippi State University, uh, as the mayor mentioned, initially have Mississippi State in our analysis, in our demographic analysis, but that has been since removed from what I'm going to present to you today. I'm going to flip over to one other map, and then I will start with the presentation, and feel free to interrupt me at any time. This, this map is, is the same as the prior map, except we have the existing land use on here with the yellow being single-family residential, orange being, uh, multifamily uses such as apartments or condos, red's commercial, purple is industrial, and blue is, uh, semi-public, so this is, uh, a version of the existing land use, uh, map. Uh, and I'm quickly going to go back over this, but if I'm going too fast, you have a question, uh, please feel free to interrupt me, but the existing city we can see, uh, from twenty-ten to twenty-eighteen has grown from, uh, almost twenty-four thousand to over twenty-five thousand at this point in time, and these are not my estimates, these are estimates that we are taking from the American Community Survey Census Bureau. The annexation study, back in twenty-ten, according to the, uh, census data, the census block data, was two thousand and seventy-two, and population is, uh, in twenty-eighteen, we estimated six thousand, six hundred and twenty-six, tremendous growth, and how did can, and then, and then I'll go to the next slide, but when you combine the city and the study area, you have almost thirty-two thousand in population, so it would push the city over thirty thousand, and that's without the university, say that again, that's without the university. Uh, next, the dwelling units, and really the main thing I want to call to your attention on this slide is really the study area, we have a little over, uh, thirteen hundred, thirteen sixty-eight, almost, uh, thirty thousand, about thirty-four hundred, uh, in twenty-eighteen, so that eight-year period, there's been over two thousand dwellings, that's tremendous growth out there, uh, when you back up, the population in and of itself are as, the study area, six, over sixty-six hundred people, in Mississippi, in order to be classified as a city, if you have a population of two thousand or above, so that gives out, we have over sixty-six hundred people just on the fringes of the city of Starkville in our, our study area, so that's a significant population and significant growth. Here, we, uh, apart the racial composition of the existing city, uh, it's thirty-four point six percent black population, the study area has four, four point three percent, uh, black population, when you combine it with the existing city, it's thirty-five point six, so it goes up about one percent, there's a lot more population here in the existing city versus the study area, therefore, it has a, a minimal impact, so, but it does slightly increase by one percent, so there will be no negative impact on the minority population. And here we have the voting age, now you would redistrict according to the total population, but it's also good to have it referenced, the voting age, you can see, uh, the existing city is thirty point six percent, this would be thirty-one point four, again, this is for the twenty-ten, because that's the latest information, if we were redistricting today, the only census block information we have is from the twenty-ten census, and that brings me to the point that we have the twenty-ten census that's going to be cranking up, uh, in a couple, twenty-twenty, thank you, mayor, for politely to remind me correctly, they have the twenty-twenty census, she knew where I was going, it's going to be cranking up in a couple of years, uh, so it would be good, if possible, to have this annexation if the, the board decides to move forward, uh, but that's stipulated, if the board decides they would like to move forward, keep in mind we do have the twenty-twenty census, uh, coming up, if you'd like to have all accounted, and it's official as of April one, uh, twenty-twenty, but certainly they will, uh, the, the process will start prior to that time. Uh, total land area, the existing city's, uh, twenty-five point six, study area's ten point nine, the, a large, combined will be thirty-six point five. Here we have street miles, the, the light purple are local roads, the dark purple are state and federal, so you can see, we have these calculations, which we utilize in our financial analysis for the general fund, and one thing I want to look at briefly as far as existing land use, we have, if, this is an annexation study here, it's also seven hundred and ninety-one single-family, when you look at the multifamily units, uh, two thousand, four hundred and thirty-four, uh, everyone knows that Ickewell County doesn't have zoning, and looking at those two, and I'm not being critical of any development or anything like that, but I do believe that if this area were, were under the comprehensive plan for the city and had zoning. and had zoning to help control, in my opinion, my preliminary opinion, this could be considered an imbalance between single-family versus multifamily. You don't see too many cities with this imbalance between single-family versus multifamily. Now, there's certain needs for multifamily, from apartments and condos and so forth. But there's certainly, you can see the disproportionate share between single-family and multifamily based on our LMU survey.
Excuse me. What do you mean by certain needs? What do you mean, certain needs for the multifamily? You said there are certain needs.
They address a certain amount of population, where it has to do with students, where it may have to do with affordable housing, a wide range of those needs in communities that vary across.
Are you saying in terms of the services that we provide, in terms of need, or?
No, I'm talking about housing needs.
Okay.
Yes, I'm glad you, I wanna clarify that. There's certain housing needs in every community, whether it's from rental homes, single-family, multifamily ownership and so forth. And what I'm saying is, you wanna make sure that you address those needs, but you also don't want to get an imbalance of those land, of those housing as well. And I draw on that from my education and experience in working with other cities around the state where they have noticed apartments. The growth of apartments may be more than really what the community overall serves the community best.
Thank you.
That's really what I'm saying. And I'm careful in saying that because I'm not trying to be critical of what's out there, but I just think that's something as planners and city leaders, you want to keep in touch with.
For sure. Thank you.
And bottom line that I'm not holding back on is, I strongly believe this area would benefit from the city's planning and zoning and code enforcement. And when I say, not from the city standpoint, but from the entire community standpoint, from the planning, the zoning, protection of land uses as well as property values and investment in property. So when I look at the distribution of land uses in the area. I'm glad you asked that question, I'll just clarify.
Thank you.
This, yes. Now, this slide we had here before, where we have the total assessed value of real, personal, automobile, home, public utility, the total estimated assessed value according to the 2017 tax roll is almost $44 million. When we apply the general fund millage rate, you have a little over $1 million in tax revenue. We use a collection rate of 95%. Then, of course, this is just a calculation here, we did not include this in our analysis. The downtown business district, the two mills, that's just shown here, so that's part of your, at least the tax levy from this current fiscal year. And then sales tax, we actually sent the entire list. There's about 16, 17 businesses that are located in our study area. We sent the entire list, along with the map, to the Department of Revenue and asked them, just assume that the business had been located inside the city of Starkville for the past two fiscal years, what would have been the diversion back to the city, those businesses that have been located in the city? And then at the end of 6/30/2016, that's the state's end of fiscal year, it would've been $102,000, $102,365. That increased slightly to $102,476. Now, this is money right here that is collected by the state, 7% generally in sales tax, depending on what you're buying. That 7% goes to Department of Revenue. But if those businesses are located inside of a municipality, such as the city of Starkville, 18 and a half percent of that 7% comes back to this community. So over $100,000 a year is leaving this community, in this surrounding community and parts of October County, because this only includes a small fringe area around the county. Over $100,000 was lost. This money could come back to be utilized for maintaining streets and ranges, providing police protection, fire protection, street lighting and so forth. Anything in the general fund is where that, this money would go. Yes, sir?
I was gonna touch on that. For $100,000, you're saying that's pretty disproportionate to have multifamily of that, obviously, 20... I'm asking, is $100,000 enough to fund all those additional road miles and all of the additional infrastructure?
I've got a detailed analysis of that, I'm gonna get into that here, just briefly.
And that's just sales tax, although, Carver, that's not the Avalora, which was the million.
What's the total?
Million one, something?
You got a little bit on Avalora.
You got all that later on, huh? I'll be quiet.
I'm getting, I'm building up to that, yes.
Okay.
Next, and I'm switching gears right now. What we're going in, that's we're even having a new state slide here again. We're going into departmental requirements, I go into our general fund analysis, and then also have Mr. Nagel's water and sewer plan and cost estimates as well. I'd also like to say that in this analysis, we met with all your department heads. Again, I met, I met earlier with Mr. Tywin with the Rating Bureau, fresh in memory. We were looking at annexing further east, which would require a power station, but I was instructed at one of our last readings that we would bring that back to a point where we wouldn't have to have a power station in any county, which would require an investment in a station, probably at least 10 firefighters, as well as a fire engine, a fire truck. So that was, this does not require that yet. Once you annex, the city's Class Four power rating will be expanded on day one, prepare for annexation. So, and also, we conducted our general fund financial analysis. We worked, in addition, working with department heads and those requirements, we worked with Ms. Harden and went over our methodology and incorporated any of her thoughts or suggestions that she thought we should modify entire methodology. And I think it's something that she felt pretty comfortable with. Obviously, the burden is still with me and my firm, but it's something we did go over with her. Number one, mainly to make sure that our methodology fit for the city of Starkville and what we were doing here. All right, any questions for moving forward? Here, under general government, there's no additional personnel or equipment needed. We did allow some funds in for redistricting, because once you annex, you need to redistrict and have everyone in a particular ward. So we have the money in for redistricting, the additional county fees for property tax collection. Yes, ma'am?
I have a quick question. The redistricting, 2020 will require a redistricting as well. Is that something, is there a timeline that you could combine those two and not find yourself doing two redistrictings if this? No?
If this were annexed today, my recommendation, as your planning officer, not as your city attorney, but my recommendation would be to redistrict. That way, everybody has all the persons that they can call to redistrict. Depending on the timing of the annexation, assuming the board moves forward, my answer could change if it got closer, Mayor, to that 2020. But if it were happening right now, I would say let's move forward with redistricting. So everybody would have a representative. But obviously, as you get closer to that, there'll probably be a cutoff time on that growth, where it would be best just hold up. Police Department, we're adding 15 additional patrol officers, 18 in year one, 7 in year two. Also 15 patrol cars, 18 in year one, 7 in year two. And of course, we have in here all of the additional equipment and all that they will need. This is the patrol cars, as well as officers ready to run. So we have all of that built into our financial analysis. Fire Department, no additional personnel or equipment needed. Once this annexation, the city moves forward, it's completed Class Four for everyone, which, yes, sir?
Police protection standpoint, would you be running calls through the university? Are you gonna have to reroute all the way around every time? Just a question, I mean, you got a call right when you shoot across campus and running with your lights on, can you go through campus, or do you have to station somebody out there?
If we need to, I mean.
It's okay?
Yeah, it's okay. You know, but it's probably better to use the side roads anyway because of the traffic.
I just didn't know if you had, if it was legal, if that's not in city limits, or typically, I don't think you'd run through university with your lights on, but it's okay?
We're probably, we're used to side roads, but if we needed to.
Okay, just a question. Thank you.
And if I could add, obviously, I'm a police officer, but if I could add something to that, obviously, if there's an emergency, and you can get through the campus quicker than going around, I think you'd go through there if there was an emergency. If you're just on regular patrol, you probably won't stay in your jurisdiction or in the city for the most part. Do you agree with that, officer?
Thank you.
Community Development Department, we had a code enforcement officer, one building inspector, slave planning support, picked up a computer, iPad, phone, et cetera, technology services, update the comprehensive plan and apply zoning. Now, the reason I put some funds in updating the comprehensive plan, though you have, the comprehensive plan you have now is not that old, I don't think, I remember reading about it. And it probably has this area in there, but I wanted to have some money in there in case you need to get public input again from these areas, refocus on your future land use map, which is the basis for your zoning. So I put money in there for updating of the comprehensive plan as well as applying zoning. Now, once this area, if it were in the city at 12 o'clock tonight, you know what it would come in zoned as? It would come in unzoned. There's a legal process that you must go through and hold public meetings. And the legal process is really the public hearing that you have to acquire. But it must be based on adopted comprehensive plan, future land use plan, and conduct proper public meetings. So until you complete that, it will be unzoned, because October County has no zoning at this time. The Engineering and Street Department, we have two street department operators, three street department laborers, an asphalt patching machine, a bucket excavator, and 244 street lights. We're planning on having 122 of those installed in year one, 122 in year two. Now, obviously, we put together a plan so we can build in our numbers from a financial standpoint. If the city deviates some from this, especially if they want to speed up the services, whatever they'd like to do, but we have to make some assumptions in order to build our financial model. We have the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department, which we did interview and met with and do the personnel and equipment that would be needed. But this is a separate fund, it's not part of the general fund. Their revenue has to offset their expenditures, but two hours, two laborers, front end loader and rear end loader, and those have to deal with garbage, knuckle boom, and trash bags for household garbage as well.
So who, I mean, so we would have to, I guess, that would cause an increase in rates because of the population, right? Meaning the revenue that came in, that you just said?
The amount of population out there, I would not think that it would. It would have to be, obviously, it's based on the revenue.
Right.
Now, the way it works generally in Mississippi, and this is, I'll touch a little bit on the legal part, but October County, do they provide trash collection in-house, or do they have a contract?
They contract it down.
All right. That contract may run X number of years. And so, again, I'm gonna use the analogy, if this annexation were completed tomorrow, October County's contract would still be valid. It does, this annexation does not void that. And so it could be worked out where either the city of Starkville honors that contract to the end of it. I think legally, it can run up to maybe five years maximum, that you would be required to honor that. But I think this would be something you could negotiate with the county, the ward supervisor, and see how long that contract is and when it would be a transition from the county's contract to the city. Is the way that would work. Next, I'm gonna go into the demographics and financial data. And when I say that, this is just a demographic data sheet, which we saw mostly in graphical form here. I'll go back through all of those numbers in graphical form, you have it in the presentation that was handed out. The next one is the estimated total run. And let me get my copy so I can read that one with other. Okay, when you see the general property taxes at 25.58 mils at 1.95 collection rate, we have a little over a million, and we're growing that at 7.4%. We looked at historical growth rates inside the city and looked back five years and made some projections based on historical trends, historical growth rates, and so forth. Then we have franchise fees that we estimated, license and permits, as well as intergovernmental revenues from sales taxes, as well as the county road tax. And when you're looking on your table in front of you, you see the intergovernmental revenues with a bold number across, and then you see the sales tax and county road tax. Those total up to that bold number. We're going to break it out where you can see what the sales tax was, what the county road tax was. But the, what's totaled up are in the bold numbers there. And then fines and tortures is the last line item. And then you can see where we have a total of revenue for year one, two, three, four, and five. So it goes from about $1.7 billion in year one to a little over $2.2 million in year five. And revenues, and again, that consists of general property taxes, franchise fees, license and permits, intergovernmental revenues, as well as fines and tortures. And we calculated this basically by looking at your current budgets and audits, what you spend, I mean, what you receive from revenue. It may be on per capita basis, per dwelling unit basis, assessed valuation basis, or sales tax. And that's, and this is a methodology that I've been using over 25 years. And again, we went over it with Ms. Harden as well. So we utilize most current budget, as well as audits, and looking at historical growth trends and what is being received as revenue inside the city. And while I say that, we did the same methodology on expenditures. Of course, we took in and built in the expenditures from any additional personnel or equipment. And then we also built in operating costs, whether it's per mile of street, per capita, per dwelling unit, or whatever it may be. But are any questions on the revenues before proceeding to the expenditures? And again, this is general fund, okay? All right. The expenditures are set up the same way, where you have general government and the bold across. Under that, we have operating costs, property tax collection fees, as well as redistricting. We have them broken out by line items, so you can see, and all of those will total up what's in the bold across on the general government. Police Department, operating costs. And even though if we have, we implement the police officers over a two-year period, we can, we put the entire operating cost in year one, because there's gonna have to be officers running from day one. So we have the personnel, year one, the equipment and uniforms, as well as, again, in year two, personnel, equipment, and uniforms, as well as county control. All of those total up in year one, which we're spending a little over $676,000 estimated in the police department. That goes up to over a million in year two. There, and remains over a million through year five. The Fire Department, even though we are not adding any additional personnel or equipment or trucks, and we may be responding to some areas out there at the current time, but we did go ahead and calculate what you were spending on per dwelling unit basis inside the city. We ratioed that out for our study area, and we're adding in over $40,000 year additional expenses. And that's And that's gonna be mainly needs of fuel and, and maintenance of equipment and so forth. No additional personnel or equipment. Community development, uh, department, we had in operating costs, personnel, equipment, uniforms, comprehensive plan update, and apply zoning. Now, if we're able to do it cheaper than what we have estimated here, that's fine, too. I just wanted to put a good number in there, uh, that I felt like was a good number to, uh, accomplish those goals. And then, again, you can see, uh, we have some front end costs with the con- comprehensive plan update, apply zoning, and that puts it over two hundred thousand in year one, but that drops down to a hundred and sixty thousand and levels out a little over a hundred and forty thousand throughout, uh, for community development. Engineering and street department, uh, we have a operating cost of two sixty-one in, uh, year one, two sixty-eight in year two. You'll see it go down almost in half there. Well, that's, that's what it does. We looked at your expenditures per mile for, uh, uh, in the existing city. For the first two years, we doubled that cost per mile, because we know you'll have to be bringing some of the streets up to standard streets and drainage and so forth, and we'll need attention. So, the first two years, we've actually doubled the cost based on what you're spending per mile inside the city for, uh, street maintenance. Uh, we have additional personnel, equipment, uniforms, we have our street lights. Uh, so you can see there, we're spending, uh, uh, upwards of five hundred thousand the first two years, and it remains over four hundred thousand year three, three, five. Civil defense, uh, warning system, we have, uh, uh, funds built in for that. No additional funds on park and recreation. They're currently being utilized by anyone outside the city at this time, so there shouldn't be additional, uh, expense there. The next line item is any excess or deficit revenues over expenditures for first year. We have an excess of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Year two is a deficit right at eighty thousand. That's when we bring on the same base of police officers and all. And the year three, uh, is back, oh, it's over two hundred thousand in excess, about three forty in year four, and over four hundred and seventy-two in year five. For the annexation area alone for the general fund, we keep a running fund balance. Of course, at the beginning of the year, you start out with zero, and you can see how it goes from one sixty-five down to eighty-six when we have the deficit back up over three hundred thousand in year three, uh, over six hundred and forty-three thousand in year four, and, and about one point one billion in year five. And that's for the, uh, that's for the general fund. So, any questions on, uh, on this table? Okay? The next page, this says, water and sewer plan cost assessment. This is what Mr. Nagel had worked up for us. Uh, of course, this has the, the university in at the time when he calculated the numbers. Uh, so I'm estimating, and I'm a civil engineer as well as a real planner, but I will defer to him. But, uh, the line, let me, let me show you what I'm talking about here. This map that Mr. Nagel, uh, prepared identifies water lines for fire protection, because there's, there's so many certificated areas out here. Uh, on the watch, certificated areas, you can see that there's certificated areas all the way around the city of Starkville. So, these cost estimates are really running fire lines throughout. We may not have to, uh, I, I like to take this map and meet with the Rainy Bureau, maybe cut, can cut back some, because you're supposed to have, uh, a fire hydrant within, uh, one thousand feet of a structure. And of course, if you're not able to sell the water, you'd want to try to minimize as, uh, as much. And but, but make sure you have proper fire protection, and you protect your class four fire rating. On the sewer, this is one that's impacted by, uh, MSU. According to Mr. Nagel, there's a, uh, a lift station here. He was gonna relocate it to this point and have gravity coming down through here, and then the force might bring it back to a, a gravity station that would take it to the plant, with my understanding. And also, there's this portion that's running through the campus that, uh, maybe could connect at this point. And round numbers, when I calculated the distance of this line as well as this line, it may reduce the numbers, uh, around four hundred thousand dollars. Now, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Nagel. I had mentioned to him last week that I was gonna have this meeting, because I was waiting for him to, uh, have those numbers. Uh, he would, but I did not, I did not receive those numbers between part of this meeting. So, the annexation, uh, for the water lines is about three point two million. The annexation, uh, for the sewer is about three point seven. Those are the hard costs when you add in easement acquisition and contingencies were unknowns. Uh, that seven million goes up to about eight point seven million dollars, uh, there. Next, and there's a lot of text on here, but these are financing options to where, uh, if you're implementing and, and the water and sewer, there's a certain amount of bunch, depending on what you have as a fund balance in the water and sewer funds, uh, you could, uh, utilize the funds out of there. Also, one of the first things you want to do, if there's any community development block rent money you may qualify for. Also, there's state revolving fund for the sewer as well as water, and they're about one point seven five percent and, uh, two percent, uh, on the loans. Uh, there's also cap loans that are capped at a million dollars, that are three percent. Uh, you can issue bonds in the Mississippi Development Bank, and also issue water and sewer revenue bonds as well. And the revenue bonds, you have to have absolute revenue coming back in to offset the debt service. And then the last thing, which you don't see very often, is issue, uh, GO revenue bonds. And that's where you, uh, are backing those by the full faith and credit of the city. It does count against your, uh, debt capacity, the fifteen percent, as well as the twenty percent rule. But those are options for that. The money that you would put in, put in in, in the water and sewer, that would be spread out over a five-year period, because we look at, at having the water and sewer approved, it's put in within a five-year period. So, it's not like all of that money would go in in year one, and, uh, that would be spread out over a five-year period and financed for twenty to twenty-five year period. Now, those are options in the city of Starkville, but obviously, you, uh, utilize the best option for the city. Uh, also, I've included for fire insurance rate comparison, if you have a frame home, uh, if, and, uh, if you have a value of a seventy-five thousand dollar home, if it's class four, which is in the blue, class seven is in the orange, and class ten is in the gray. Uh, then you can see that the savings, if you're in a class ten versus a class four. Uh, between seven and four for frame, you do have some savings, uh, just like a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home would go down from sixteen, twenty, to fifteen hundred. These are the recommended insurance rates by the Mississippi State Revenue Bureau, is the source of this information, as you can see in the lower left-hand corner. So, you can see the impact, especially if you're in a class ten going to a class four for frame construction. Next one, if you have masonry, the rates for a four and a seven are the same. That's the reason you'll see on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, thirteen eighty versus thirteen eighty. But if you're in a class ten, you can see there's potential for substantial savings there. Yes, sir?
Um, you're saying there are class tens out in the county?
Yes, sir.
In this, okay.
There, there's some, there's, there's some sevens, but there are some tens as well. That's the reason we included both of them.
Are they on the northern side? Where's the tens at?
I have the map, if you want me to show you.
We can get it out for me.
But, yeah. Uh, the way I would say that there's class seven and class ten in our study area, not just in the county, but there's some class ten in our, in our annexation study area. That's the reason we included, uh, that in there. All right? So, you can see the potential, and oftentimes, it's dependent, but, uh, on, on the savings versus the amount of taxes. Oftentimes, you'll see where the fire insurance premium savings can offset or, or almost offset any increase in taxes, uh, uh, by the, by the annexation. All right? So, that is the, is the last slide. And with, with that, uh, Mayor, turn the meeting back over to you, and I'd be glad to answer any other questions.
Okay. I think on the carpet, I wanted you to pull up the, uh, you've got a map that shows seven versus the ten? I thought you said that you had one, if you just.
I did. And those are the distances from you, but in the white is a class ten. So, here's, uh, northeast portion of our study area. The crosshacks here is university, uh, that's crosshacks. But this area is a class ten, that area's a ten. The remainder down, so here's a class seven, we have a class seven here, and there's one little area, area two is a class ten. Yes, sir?
We can finish that. Well, I just got a couple of questions.
No, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that he would show that map, so you go ahead.
Pretty big savings for your class ten home. Um, like up on that northeast, you follow the road up seven hundred and fifty feet. Why do you do that on an annex, that's not on that map, but why do you do that on an annexation? Like, um, you follow a sliver right up, not area two, but just on that northeast corner? You have to do that for an annexation standpoint to go up and grab that next, uh, it looks like a roundabout around Spring Hill Road?
That's the area.
What's that?
That's that road that's been kinda, no one knows if it's in the city or not.
Okay.
I believe that's what that was, right?
Well, and I think we had asked him to, uh...
This is Collier Road.
Collier, okay.
Yeah, to the north.
But over there, over there to the right where he's pointing, that would allow us to control that bypass area? Because that's, that, that's why we went around there, is because that's the, you know, entry areas to the city. That would allow us to have some control of that entry area.
And what, explain to me what, what's going on with area two that's kinda odd sitting up there by itself?
Well, this was an area that I think has, uh, one house or so up there. The only way to get to it is through, uh...
Collier Road, I'll take that, Mr. Slaughter. Uh, that's an area that in the original nineteen ninety-eight annexation, um, did not get included, but was intended to be included. We go, we go up through Collier Road to get, um, uh, there's a little last, last piece up in there.
Yeah.
So, that, that was just to be a, yes. Oh, just to clean up, clean up that little area there.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Uh, Alden Perkins, Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yeah, Mr. Slaughter, you know, uh, there's been a lot of discussion about that nineteen ninety-eight annexation on Collier Road. I'm not a, um, engineer, but, you know, my recollection, I don't know what happened, um, maybe it became an interpretation issue. Uh, when that matter came for the board back in October, November nineteen ninety-eight, uh, for annexation, it was my recollection. And again, I'm not an engineer, I don't, I can't read all those sophisticated surveys and drawings, other than the language that is spread there on. But I thought that all of that Collier Road, you know, was in on that, um, on that annexation, because the board back then said they, it was, it was annexing Collier Road by years thereafter. So, hopefully, if the, you know, the board by majority vote, you know, um, if they, uh, annex, it'll be some clarity on what's brought in, because I was always under the impression that, uh, Collier Road, that entire road was brought in, because it, I do not recall any discussion ever saying that it was a part, a portion of Collier Road back in nineteen ninety-eight. Because, you know, uh, and the part that we're, we're talking about is probably about from here, maybe, uh, uh, to, um, uh, Mr. Clements from me, or to Ms. Isaac from me, maybe about thirty or forty yards. And, you know, I just, you know, that would just, you know, and the board discussed that at great length after nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, but, you know, it seemed like there's been, um, engineering interpretation that all of Collier Road wasn't out there. Now, they got a, a city limit sign, and, you know, that says, uh, city limit stopped here. It just looks so unsophisticated, uh, about, and so on, appealing how it is done out there. It just, um, not the, the, the most aesthetically pleasing thing, how the city has done that. But, uh, but let's make sure if, if, if that is the will of the city by majority, that, that, you know, there's some clarity. So, another twenty years from now, then, you know, that somebody will be thinking that this road was brought in. Because I always thought, when the board said back in nineteen ninety-eight, Collier Road would be brought in. I don't ever recall the board saying a, a part, a portion of Collier. And then what has happened is there's a resident out there who has been, um, in the past, uh, coming up to this board, trying to get the board to bring him into the city. It's been the issue of the bus going out there, the issue of the garbage collection issue of, and I represent this, what I'm talking about. There've been an issue of, of, um, sanitation services, and that caused great chaos and great confusion to taxpayers and, you know, who, others who may have thought that they were into the city. So, but, you know, but of course, it's been determined, obviously, by engineers that it's not in. But I, but I was just clearly under the impression, as it was, uh, made known to us, it was Collier Road. And so, but, you know, if, if a representation is made that this road's gonna come in, make sure that the engineers, when they put that engineering language out there, uh, make it clear that, um, if that's gonna be the will of the board, uh, to be clear that, uh, that whatever road the board gonna bring is gonna be brought in. So, twenty or thirty years down the road, then somebody asks, well, I thought I was in the city, and then low and behold, they're not in the city. So, hopefully, that'll be real clear as we proceed further, because that's been a big discussion in the past about that little portion of Collier Road. So, um, it's been the biggest talk throughout the years on it.
Yes, sir. Well noted. The, my only response to that, of how that could have happened, and I, I wasn't part of it, but it's that, just like now, back then in ninety-eight, that you can adopt an ordinance for a certain area, and the judge has the right to exclude some area, uh, should he so desire. I don't know if that was the case.
It was not, it was, it was not. No, no judge, uh, to my recollection.
Okay. So, you were drawing up along the section or, or, you know, section line there. But well noted. We will make sure that this board is well informed on, uh, on what is considered for annexation.
Anyone holding card?
Last question. It seems to be, I was just gonna ask this maybe, maybe to the mayor. Um, it seems to be that it's, you know, mainly proportionally annexing apartments, you know? And with that Mississippi State now, what's the intention of this, and what's our gain? I mean, we still got a lot of needs here, other than a, you know, boost over, I guess, getting over the thirty thousand threshold from a, uh, strategy of attracting industry and restaurants and everything else. But what else is to gain? Because things, I guess you're saying disproportionately multifamily?
Yes.
I mean, it's supposed to be, see, like, on, on area one southwest, why don't we continue to go down that way and...
That's, that's a large population.
Just grab more single-family homes. It seems to be most of this is multifamily, so.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, part of the methodology and the thought, and, and obviously, from my perspective, is that I do think it's very important that we become in the top ten in population in the state of Mississippi, which this would do for us. I think it allows us to attract industry, and I think it allows us to attract retail. I think it puts us in a position to, um, be in control of our community, because right now, we have a huge number, about, what was it, four thousand people, who are enjoying being in an urban environment, but are not sharing the cost of being in an urban environment. And because these are multifamily, these are not going to be your single-family residential who are paying the, the normal percent. This is commercial, this is commercial property in essence, so they will pay that fifteen percent rate. I think it is incumbent on us to understand that we have a very large population that is the size of several cities outside of us, that if somebody wanted to incorporate, that would keep us from going any further to the east, which is where our growth is. Um, I see us growing to the east, and the population that is to the west at this point is Sunset, and it is the Lakes, which is that, uh, apartment complex, that's the very nice apartment complex with the golf course, et cetera, et cetera.
Lakeside.
So, that is the area that has the population. And that's basically what we're talking about, is population, and then we're talking about a commercial, uh, the Ford Motor Company. We're talking about a hotel, we're talking about the, uh, Sprint Mart and other, the Cadence Business.
I think there's a bank out there.
Yeah, the Cadence, the Cadence Operations Center over there. All those are, are, um, environments that are enjoying being in an urban... All those are environments that are enjoying being in an urban city, but are not sharing the costs of all the rest of us being in an urban environment. And I think it is, I think it's incumbent on us to recognize that and to take them in so that we control our future, because that's what we're talking about. We're talking about, we're talking about the future of our community. And if we, it's been 20 years, and if we don't do it now, I don't know what the options are in terms of how that will continue to grow and how that will impact us without us being able to control it. Had we had that property to begin with before the Helix, Aspen Heights, 21, the Point, all of those came into existence, we might have had an opportunity to make sure that they were sprinkled and safer. We might have had an opportunity to help them blend better into our community in terms of traffic and flow. So I think there's some strong arguments for us to understand that as a community, we are growing and we're gonna continue to grow because Mississippi State is a driver, and they're driving them to the east. And if we don't control that, then we're going to lose the opportunity to determine our future.
So I'm not agree with you in part on that, and I'll say that those developers probably would not have chosen those locations had they been city limits just from a planning perspective. I think they knew going outside on the county lines that they could do, there were less regulations to do what they wanted to. Now, with that comes all of the issues of the infrastructure, you see all this in the paper of how the capacity they have with water and sewer, and they're having issues in that with the county. So I guess that's my largest concern, is these big massive apartment complexes is, if they, I'm not sure they're built to our standards, and before we annex that, to make sure we don't have some, some big issues down the road from things that weren't built to what we would consider our standards, so.
Well, let me, let me address that, because I do think David could probably back me up, that you know, you're not going to get insurance on things, or bank loans on things that are not built to certain standards. And let me also say that a number of those developments are already receiving sewer and water from the city through the university, so a lot of that is stuff that's coming from us already. Excuse me, Terry, would you come here just a second? Mr., yeah, Mr. Kemp, would you mind? I don't wanna, I don't wanna be the only one saying that, I wanna make sure you back me up. And if I'm wrong, you know, don't hesitate, but if you would come so we can... The, the organizations, the projects out in the, on the east side, are they, are they not flowing through us on sewer?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
The wastewater treatment plant was set up from a regional approach, and so basically it either throws, flows through Mississippi State or into our system, and we actually have to treat it.
Okay, alright, I thought I was correct in that, but Water Association, they are still, you know, they're in the Water Association, that we're not providing water.
No.
Right.
We do have some, we do have emergency connections with some of the small water systems around us, but that is not a supply, a normal thing, but sewer would all be separate from that outside the, I'm not really sure.
Thank you. Alderman Miller?
Mike, this is for you. If we were to make any tweaks going forward, assuming that's the direction we're going to go, say if we used one roadway as a boundary, okay, say the north side, you annex north of the roadway, who maintains that roadway and jurisdiction, you know, like County Line Road and, you know, it was one down in Jackson, you know, you got Ridge on the one side, Jackson on the other side, who maintains that?
We do not want to create that situation. If we're gonna annex along a road, my first recommendation is to at least go so many feet, like if the road's to the north of the city, at least go so many feet north of the north right away, so you control both sides of that road. When the police officer's out there, when the fire truck is out there, they know their jurisdiction. When you have the garbage truck running up and down the road, they're serving both sides of the road. So I wouldn't recommend utilizing, especially not the center line, but even on fallback, not even a right-of-way line.
Could you go down the roadway if you went to the, say, the south side of the right-of-way without getting a particular neighborhood and leave it alone?
You can.
If it hasn't written, you wrote no benefit?
Yes, certainly, yes, you can do that. Obviously, the line has to stop somewhere, there's more, there are places that work better than other places. Down the center line of the road, I'd strongly recommend not doing, doing that. And it works best if you can utilize, even though you don't see them out in, in the field, so to speak, section lines, power lines, waterways like creeks or so forth, things like that is what we utilize. When it comes to redistricting, center line roads go, work great, but not for city boundaries. But you certainly can stop it at a, at a right-of-way, that's, that is an option. And if I could add, I think it was Alderman Carver, regarding our boundary here, this boundary that we have before this board today is one that I worked carefully, at least I had planned them, through the board, and they said, "Okay, this is the one, let's do," well, it was similar to this, "Let's do Phase 1." Once I presented the Phase 1, we cut it back and tweaked it a little bit so we wouldn't have to have that fire station. So this is a boundary that we've worked with over time, but that doesn't mean we can't modify it. We can, we can modify it, but this is the one that this board gave me direction to move forward on, and that's the one I'm here tonight on, is the one I was directed to. Also, if I may add, Mayor, when you were asking about why annex these areas, my answer to that is, is because it is the community's best interest that you annex these areas. Right now, and again, I wanna, I wanna answer, but I want, I don't wanna be too overly critical, but right now, there's really almost uncontrolled growth out there without planning, without zoning, without code enforcement. The utilities is, is another thing. Transportation, you have your, in your comprehensive plan, your future transportation plan, you wanna make sure if, even if you have more apartments or condominiums or whatever developed, that they have adequate infrastructure, not only for water and sewer, but for roadways. And you don't wanna create a traffic hazard in areas where, hey, we've got 3,000 cars a day dumping out on, on a road that can't handle what it has now. Have your subdivision regulations in place. In addition to the services that are needed out there, other than that, from the police, fire protection, street lighting and so forth. So I look at this as, as a win-win situation, where this benefits not just the city of Starkville, not just the community, but the entire community, which makes up Starkville as well as those surrounding areas. Another thing is this, the only way that the city of Starkville can grow, this is it. You can't jump out a mile and, and skip over some areas and jump out a mile and incorporate an area, jump out a mile and incorporate a area. You've got to grow from your boundaries out. It's required that, that any annexations be contiguous and adjacent to your existing city limits. So I think, when with the amount of population, the amount of growth, it's almost staggering when you look at what happened in the past eight years, from 2,000 population to over 6,600. That's a tremendous amount of growth.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Slaughter, thank you very much for coming and presenting tonight. Gives us a lot of information to try to digest and try to chew on it and make some sense of. I think everybody's made some good points, I think Alderman Carver, I think, I think the, you know, asking about the, the areas and the ratio of the multifamily, I think that's all valid, valid points.
Certainly.
I, I think one of the, the issues, and I think the numbers bear this out in terms of the population growth, other than that area right next to the, I'm gonna call it the Walmart interchange, where you're seeing the Lynx and you have those apartments, all the growth has been to the east. I don't think there's any question that's what's driving that growth, is the university.
That's right.
A lot of that is student housing, and that's when you look at, at our community in Oxford and other major university towns, that ratio of multifamily housing to single-family housing is typically gonna be more skewed than in a, a typical place where you're not having housing as many students. So that's, that's part of the...
That's part of it.
That's part of the reason for that. I think one of the things, and the mayor touched on this, that I think is absolutely on point, is that the university, as it's always been since its founding here, is the driver of the growth in our community. That growth is going to continue to be on the, the east side of the university, along with being inside the city limits. That gives us control, that gives us control over access when people are coming to our community. Right now, if you're coming from Highway 45 and you cut through Artesia, and you're driving that way and you hit Black Jack, it's, there is no disputing when you leave the county and when you enter the city, that's as clear as day. And that oftentimes maybe doesn't give the, the best impression, nor does it when you're entering this interchange. I think that is, in the, in the future, I can't predict on how far down the road, but what you're, what you're going to see, and I know there's been plans proposing, you're going to see something that's going to essentially function, I believe is going to be like an outer loop. We already have the 25 and 12. Poorhouse Road with a potential connection to tie back to 25 or 82 is probably going to happen at some point. Us being in control over what that beltway might look like to give us control of that is the precise reason why we need to be thinking about long-term planning, what the impact that might have in our community. It is setting that precedent for trying to control what that growth is gonna look like to give us the best opportunity down, down the road. I don't think there's any question, we're already seeing it now, if you drive down Poorhouse Road, you're already seeing land that's not in the city being cleared, being prepped for development, you're seeing signs for, for sale with proposed development likely to come. Right now, we have no control, there is no control out there. Alderman Carver, I believe is right, is once we grow our boundary, yes, they can always go build outside of that boundary, but building housing and building apartments close to the university is what's going to drive that.
That's the focal point.
The further away you're from the university, the less likely that, that, that demand for development is going to considerably go down. So I, I'm not sure where I am in terms of how I'm, if I'm willing to support this or not, but I think it gives us a lot to consider, and I do think if we're going to annex, I think that these areas that we're considering, the 82 corridor down along Poorhouse Road and the area by the Walmart interchange, and certainly the area east of the university, there's a lot of rationale and it makes sense, and it looks like the, on the surface, it looks like the, the numbers are, make it look like it might be somewhat realistic for the, the additional revenue to offset the cost. I need to spend a little more time digging through that to, to see where I feel I'm going to land, but I appreciate, I appreciate the presentation tonight, I thought it was thorough, and it was an opportunity to see how this might really impact our community for the long term. I, I think there's been lots of talk about the 1998 decision, I'm not sure anybody sitting at this table was involved in those decisions. I think what's clear is that over the last eight years since you looked at those numbers of the growth out there, and you compared that to the 1998 annexation, it's like, I don't think we're gonna have a 1998 annexation situation here if we annexed to the east, whereas we annexed to the north and to the west in 98, which in retrospect, helped you get where a bypass was gonna be, but no development. And there's been no pressure for development to come out there, whereas the university driving that, whether or not you're in the county or the city, has led to increased development.
Can I ask one thing, Mr. Slaughter? There are areas out there that are, appear to be much more agricultural than residential in terms of that, areas that we might not find ourselves in the best position to service? Are there areas that you would recommend from that standpoint to perhaps cut out, from just drawing this line straight down, which is what we initially did? Is there any of that that you would, in your analysis of this, recommend that we perhaps remove?
Yes, ma'am. There's some areas, you know, we had following down a section line here to the east of the city, and the same here in our boundary that we, that we, you know, obviously, the, the city has three options. One, you could consider annexing all of them, just like we've studied. The second option, you could, you could annex just portions of this if you wanted to make some modifications to it. The third option you have is not to annex anything. Right now, the city of Starkville is not annexing one square inch, we're just studying that annexation process until you adopt an ordinance, that's the first official step to, to annexing. So certainly, Mayor, there's some areas along the periphery that, that could be excluded if you wanted to make some slight modifications. Those show up here in this white area, there's a lot of vacant, wooded areas here, same here, same as here, there's like three structures there, one of the cemetery, I think, a couple of old homes, that's an area, also an area here to the southeast, and an area here to the south. And those just quickly jump out at me as some areas that are mostly vacant or agricultural or wooded type areas. And again, keep in mind, this is our study area, we can tweak it and modify it any way the board so chooses.
Okay. Alderman Miller, you have any comments or anything? I'm calling you out, just 'cause I, you know, I think this is really kind of important, I'm not calling you out, calling you out, I'm just saying, would you like, any comments you'd like to make? Because you're, you're a government-type kinda guy, any thoughts on that?
I, thank you, Mayor. I, I think that my general thoughts in, in sitting here is just, I think everything that folks have said, other Alderman, I think the concerns that Alderman Carver expressed are, are good concerns, and Alderman Walker's echoing that. Mr. Slaughter might disagree with me, and certainly interject if you do, but I do think the study and looking at the expenditures, we can't foresee everything that's going to take place. And so, in looking at the expenditures, in my opinion, that's potentially in a perfect world. And so, again, potentially, could see that coming out even, in terms of our expenditures and revenue coming in, there is the potential for that. And that's just a, a decision that I think the board is going to have to weigh, because I think it's a good point, that, that we might want some control out there and, and the way that it develops. I think for me personally as a board member, it is going to be, and I've said this before, crucial that we're able to provide basic city services out there and that we don't stretch ourselves too thin, because what you see from a budget standpoint across the state, as populations grow, the per capita spending for cities, per capita, goes down. And so, I certainly don't want us to short ourselves, and if we do it, I just wanna make sure that we're gonna do it right. And so, I, I would say I'm, would agree with Alderman Walker that I think it's a good idea, I appreciate the mayor's leadership in doing the study, I just need to dissect this a little bit more and, and make a good decision. But like I said, providing basic city services is, is going to be vital, and, and we need revenue to do that, and don't want us to be too thin, is my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Vaughn, do you, no thoughts? Okay, alright. Alderman Miller?
I would just like to say that thank you for the presentation, Mike.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
There's a lot of information for each one of us to digest going forward.
It is.
You know, I'm not sure, I've made this known, I'm not sure really where I'm at on this. I, I recognize the need to protect some of the areas that are really growing, and I anticipate further growth, particularly down on the south end of my ward, so just south of my ward actually, with the new south entrance corridor wanting into Mississippi State, I, I just feel like Poorhouse Road is gonna be a high-growth area, or potential for it at some point. And without zoning and land use governing that and building codes, I think we can see some kinda hodgepodge developments that you've referred to earlier, you know, outside, just outside the city limits. So I can see the benefit there. I'm also concerned that while we've also had a tough time keeping, taking care of what we've got, and I think that's gonna be an argument that a lot of folk will bring, throw at us if we decide that's the route we're gonna go. We've got a fire station that we haven't manned, and it's been built probably 10 years ago, maybe wrong, give or take, that we have not staffed fully. And then we're taking on, considering taking on a significant chunk. So I just wanna be sure that we're gonna, if we're gonna take it on, we're gonna, you know, do it right, if, if nothing else, we need to concentrate on what we've got, and be sure that we, that it's up to par, you know, we've borrowed money to pave streets, I don't like borrowing money, paving the streets, you know, something we're gonna do every 10 years. But we'll see where it takes us. Now, let me ask you this, say this board decided, we're gonna take everyone, we're gonna go full steam ahead as you presented it tonight, and you've done this all over the state, and what if one area or two said, "Oh, we don't wanna be, we're gonna fight it," how does that typically play out?
Way that would, would work.
And if I may step over to the matter, just to use an example. Now, Mike, it's a good time just quickly to give you a summary of the process. This board did decide to move forward on an annexation. The first step we would do would compare the legal descriptions that would go in annexation ordinance. We would have to describe the areas with certainty. We'd have to describe the resulting large cities, so you know exactly what we were looking at. We'd have a clean base map so you'd know what we're annexing. But let's just assume, just for example, that area two said, we don't want any part of this. When we got, and, and that would come at what we call a return date. Once we've adopted ordinance, posted notice in the proposed annexation areas, in the local newspaper, and the judge sets what's preferred to as, as a return date or the first hearing on, yeah, and it would be the only area we had no objectors. But if someone showed up and said, I'm, here I am in area two, I own this, I don't want to be annexed, and the city said, decided, we'll look at you out if that's the only thing, and you want to annex the remainder areas, then you can move forward with that. Now, it's not always easy to do that if you have some internal objectors. So it would, it would really just depend on where they're located. And the city would have to look at what makes sense for the future of this community as a whole. If it's an easy area, just for example, I think Alderman Carver stepped out, we talked about some areas that are shown here in the white outlined in red, that we could easily modify the boundary that's mostly wooded or vacant or, or areas. If someone had this property right here and they said, wait, it's farmland or a hunt there, and I really don't want to be annexed at this time, and the city decided to cut that out, that's up to the city to decide whether they want to do that to get rid of the objector. If they're in a, in an apartment complex located in this area of area three, it's much more challenging to cut that area out. So at that return date, you have options to consider and maybe see who, if you have any objectors or don't have any objectors.
So you can move forward with an annexation ordinance. At a later date, you still have the, the opportunity to reduce it, not to expand it. If to expand it, it would take a new ordinance to do that.
If you encounter an organized challenge, how, how is that typically played out?
Well, the way it would be played out on that return date, the judge would set at some point pretty quickly, and this is a lot, really a legal question, but you feel free to jump in, a scheduling order. So you'd have discovery and so people take depositions, produce documents, admissions, and he'd set a trial.
Full blown trial.
And he'd set a trial date.
Could that, I know in a perfect world, we're shooting before that have this done, if we go that route before the 2020 census, and we're talking, I know that's not a quick process typically, as you know?
No, but I, I also don't think it's a, it's a drag-out process, because these matters get pretty good preference in chance record. And so, I would think, for instance, if the city moved forward, if it desired to move forward, let's just say some point before the end of this year, and there was an opposition protest in the spring, then I would think it would get, it would get resolved in 2019, at least from a trial court level.
And what he means by that is that there, any agreed party after the trial court decision, the chance record decision can appeal it to the Mississippi Supreme Court. Now, that could push it out another 12 or 18 months, depending on how long it takes to write the briefs and submit it to the Supreme Court. So my recommendation to the city, and this is a superficial recommendation, my real recommendation comes from the study itself and where there's, where that makes sense for this community as a whole. But on a superficial and timing level, if you're wanting to try to get in for the 2020 time, in my opinion, is sort of the essence, because it's a little bit out of your control if you, if you do have opposition. If you don't, then we're, we're in a better shape. That's just my thoughts on it, if, if you want to have that completed by 2020, and I think that would be a good thing to do if possible.
Any other comments, concerns? Mr. Slaughter, thank you so much for coming in and doing this. It is well, well done, well thought out, and I'm sure that we will digest this for, for a while, but hopefully with some guidance from the board, we'll be bringing you back at a point in time where we can make that determination one more day.
May I have just a brief closing comments?
Sure.
On this, because I know this is very important and each and every one of you wants to make sure you're doing the right thing for the city of Starkville as well as this community as a whole. And I would like to think part of the reasoning behind hiring me and my firm is to try to do the, the right step. And the only way you're going to do that is, is if you feel comfortable with moving forward. So you're not going to get any pressure from me as, as your consultant, one way or the other. I want you to have the facts and I want you to make decisions based on those facts and what you feel is best for this community as a whole. Now, in studying this, we have the 12 indicia of reasonless that the Mississippi Supreme Court has outlined over decades of hearing annexation cases, such as need to expand, path of growth, financial ability, need for planning and zoning in the area, need for municipal services, impact on minority voting strength. One of them is a fair share indicia, are people benefiting from their fair, benefiting without paying their fair share because of their proximity to the city and utilizing parks and, and recreation and all of that. But I feel like every bit we've studied is reasonable based on review of those 12 indicia of reasonless. I feel like Alderman Miller, what you were saying about the cost, certainly at the end of five years, what we have projected is a little over $1 million in excess from the general fund, but I'm not going to stand up here and say, hey, one little project somewhere can certainly change that. But we looked at, at provision of those city services on the same level you're currently providing those services, no doubt about that. So I think from, I think we've done a, a great job on estimating those revenues and expenditures. I don't think we overinflated those, went over them in detail with Ms. Harden, but certainly some things could change on, on that. But it also, what I think has the potential in this area, especially when you have Mississippi State right in the center of it, so to speak, maybe not the geographical center, but it was sort of right in the center of this annexation, is in my opinion, once you have the city's services for as police, fire, code enforcement, planning and zoning and all, this area has, I think, I hate to use the word unlimited potential, but I think has a lot more potential to grow in a way that from sales tax, from avant-garde tax, from protecting those property values and creating the environment, the kind of environment that is conducive to good quality growth. And I think that's very important for the future of this community.
Can I ask you a couple of questions? One is, in terms of annexations that you do, and if you don't want answers, you certainly don't have to, I think this is a more conservative annexation than I have seen, certainly it was a more conservative than our 1998 annexation. But I, I wanted us to do a conservative approach to this annexation so that we are not taking off, taking on more than we can handle and that it is justifiable based on population and who already is being considered as living in Starkville, but not being a part of sharing that cost. So in terms of other annexations, is that, is this one conservative or am I, am I, am I overstating the case?
No doubt, Mayor. It's a conservative annexation and I have several annexations that are ongoing right now, and I don't want to call out any city names, but there's certainly one of them where this city is in a growing community, in a growing county that hasn't annexed in 20 years, like the city. And, and their annexation is much more comprehensive because of, of, of that. So this annexation still, I think, you can look at it and tell, when you take out the Mississippi State area, you're not really going more than a mile in most directions. And, and obviously, we can't count the Mississippi State area, we're not annexing that. So I, I do think it's a conservative area that's mostly focusing on where is the growth occurring? Where are the needs in, in the area? So certainly, I feel good about it and I think it is a conservative one.
Thank you, sir. And would you do one other favor for me? Those indicia of annexation, would you mind emailing those and I'll spread, I'll share them with the board?
I'll be glad to do that.
So that as they look at this, this plan that you've provided us, they can look at that?
And there's 12 indicia and they have a lot of sub-factors, I'll use that term, under several of those indicia. And that's, that's what we will utilize if, if we move forward with our proof at the chance record level.
All right, thank you again. If there are no, no more questions, we'll let you head back home.
All right, thank you very much, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be of service to the city of Starkville. And don't hesitate if y'all want to meet again, have any further questions, y'all know how to get in touch with me.
All right, thank you so much. We do appreciate your time. All right, that concludes Mayor's, Mayor's business, and we can go to Board Business, which is consideration of a revision to the special events policy and the application. They are basically two documents, but they, they go together. So do we have a, a discussion of that? Anyone want to?
Mayor, I have approval.
Okay. I have a motion for approval from Alderman Walker, a second from Alderman Miller. Discussion.
I will say, discussion. I think the, the drafts that we've looked at thus far, I think have continued to get better. I will say that I, I think this is, looks like it will make the, the process a little bit smoother for both the applicant and hopefully community and the development department. But I would also state that while we might approve and adopt this tonight, it's not a static thing, that if there, if we determine that as applications are coming through, if there's a tweak to the system that needs to be made, I hope the community development department will, will bring that forward so we can adjust as necessary. But I'm, I, I think we've looked at this enough that I'm, I feel comfortable adopting this tonight and then making changes as we deem necessary.
Mayor, may I recognize?
Vice Mayor, you can.
Mr. Attorney, elaborate for the record, the, the revisions of, to this application. Just tell us what are the changes, off of the record.
Sure, there were three main ones from my standpoint from the last meeting to now. The first change was in paragraph three, where we specified the statutory authority for the board to come up with a special events permit and to apply either in-kind services or monetary donations. And those two statutory avenues were the advertising statutes, 1731 and 1733, and the police power statutes, which are 2119-1, 2119-15. The second thing we did is clarify that if someone wants to use fire station park, they have to seek the scheduling and approval, at least initially, from the partnership, from the Main Street Association, because the Main Street Association is the licensee to that property. And based on the license agreement, they get a right to weigh in on the scheduling of that. But once they approve, and that approval will not be unreasonably withheld based on the policy language, then the board gets ultimate approval of that event. So the board doesn't give up that approval authority. And then lastly, in the very back of the document, we clarified what the definition of sponsorship means, and we tied it to the applicable statutes, 1731 and 1733, meaning that if the city advertises as a part of a special event, it's got to make a finding of fact based on that statute, and that'll be a condition to the application. And it rules out the city being a sponsor for any political event, protest, rally, or awareness event. And that's consistent with statute 1733, which says the city can't advertise for political purposes.
Anything further, Vice Mayor?
No, ma'am, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, by a vote of six, one, motion carries. All right, second item is a consideration of calling for the first public hearing to amend the Starkville Code of Ordinance's, Chapter 82, Article 3, Assemblies, Parades, and Processions, which would make it consistent with the city's special events policy, which we just, which we just adopted. So.
Do approval.
All right, I have a motion from Alderman Walker for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrunk. Discussion. Okay, no discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And then we have an update on Starkville Utilities, issues with the new AMS meters. Mr. Kim?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board. Tonight, I just want to kind of give everybody an update on some of the issues that's going on inside the community. I've heard a lot of questions from some of our customers, and I appreciate feedback from each of you as you've read those as well. Understand there's some on social media, and I thought tonight might be a good opportunity for us just to kind of talk through some of the things and where we are as it relates to our AMI system. To begin with, we are finishing up the conversion for our billing system. And I'm using it connected to the billing, I mean, to our meters because they do interconnect. So we're at the very end of that process. It started in March. We went from what we consider a basic system to a multi-service system. We're also at the very end of our AMI deployment, which would be electric and water throughout the system, and those systems are rolling in together. Throughout that time, we're continuing to monitor, and I know we've seen some issues based on suspected maybe usage patterns that may fit in the electric area. We've been very sensitive to that, and we are continuing to do what basically we had started out would be a QA. So we're doing some independent work on meters, and if we identify a particular one, we'll go back and verify it. I will say that TVA is metering specialists are the ones providing that service, and as of yet, we have not identified any electric meter that's outside the ranges on that. So we feel very good about the product that we're getting from Elster, and also we envision that being better and better as we go forward. Recently, we had another discussion, or issue that came up, and it based on extremely high bills. And when I say high bills, they were exorbitant bills.
Like $40,000.
They were terribly.
Yes.
And I'll just say off the front, it's our mistake. It should not have gotten out. Our systems have protections in place to do that. And when I say that, we, just as a point, we, we look at 10 cycles throughout the city. So each, we, we go through a month and we go through 10. Before we do a billing, we call a pre-bill audit run. So we do a run-through with all of our bills each time we do that. It should create flags, and it does, and then we're working with SEDC to better refine that, so we've got better flags that when something pops up, we look at that. The winning question we talked about deals with what we consider final bills. And I'll use that because it does two things. It really shows a level of activity that happened all at one time. But this was a, what we consider a batch of 4,000 bills. And a final is when someone decides they want to close the account and move. So we create service orders. We do a final readout on the bill, we run it back in, and since that reading is past the previous bill, we have to reconcile that and send out a final bill. So there's a little bit of difference in that. This particular batch, which was around the July, August timeframe, which we realized that was a big transition here in Starkville, really was over 4,000 customers. So we had 4,000 customers that we tried to run a final on, and that, that was involving the entire city. So I know that some would pick out a particular area, but it involved everyone. We run finals, try to do them at least once a week. But generally speaking, we're talking about 50, maybe 100 of this one picked up. Because of success in the past, I think we became a little more comfortable with that one, and the urgency to clean that up at August the 1st, we didn't run that through that final review audit. So these didn't pop up. So these 26 accounts, just, we didn't see it until they got in the bill and were sent out. Now, we identified it by people calling, we identified it fairly quickly, as y'all can imagine. It was, it was obvious it was wrong. And I think by the next day or day and a half, all of those had been adjusted and corrected. So no one was charged those exorbitant prices. But unfortunately, from our standpoint, that was a failure on our system because that's not what we want to allow to get out. Occasionally, we'll see some, but, but that's what happened on that case. Now, since then, we do a real deep drive on evaluating our processes, and in this is example where we have not had one person review, we've actually created at least two, in some cases, three, based on volume, as we're rolling all these numbers together. So I think we've also built a little bit more time into review piece. We've tried to squeeze it, but I think as we go forward, I feel comfortable that we won't have this situation occur again. So I say all that to say that was an occurrence for several reasons. We do have safeguards in place that we're working with SEDC to even refine to make better. And when I say a target, it may show that if a bill shows up... And when I say a target, it may show that if a bill shows up, and it's fifty percent more or less than the previous month or the last year's number, it sends a flag out. But with our new cycles, I mean, our new system now that we're at the very end, we've got tremendous more data. You know, we moved it, and I think some of the people weren't quite familiar, looking at some of the screens, but we learned quick, and so I think we're in good shape as we go forward, so.
And Terry, if I understood you, when we spoke earlier today, some of those that had the exorbitant bills were an installation issue from day one, and you're going to get those corrected before the end?
We do have, and as we've gone through the deployment, we've identified, they've flagged, they've been on site over here, and now we've got a team of basically some of our maintenance people on our metering site that are going back to correct that, and we hope to have that in very short term. So that's a new priority in addition to merging the two systems together, so we've got a bill everyone can trust. And we're also stressing very hard now with the new system in place, that the bill will be more consistent. We can pick the day that they go out, and it won't be as much slack on each of our billing. As I say, we have ten, you know, really trying to make those more efficient so that you don't overlap, and I think that causes less confusion, too.
Thank you, Terry.
Sorry. So we have quality control from us and from SEDC?
It's primarily rest on us, on the quality control, but they're working with us to put filters in on how we would set it up to, I mean, to look at all of the numbers. So we've got some flexibility on how to, I guess we would say maximum amends are out-of-range data, if that was what you're asking, Mayor.
Yes. Okay, let me ask you one more. One of the things that I have heard more than once is, and I'll give you my own example, because I was going to hand you my bill and say, would you put this in? I got this, I got this particular invoice or bill on Friday, which was the seventeenth, right? And it is a penalty due date after the twenty, or from the twenty-fourth. So that is a very narrow window. Have we got the ability to broaden that window from, what is that, seven days to something wider?
We have some flexibility, and we're actually looking at it. Excellent point, because that was one of the concerns that we also heard was that, and here it goes back to billing cycles. When we start a bill, we set it up, we actually have about three days to get them pushed out, so that the customers will have at least fifteen days from the bill date to the due date. And if something happens in that two-day window, it throws the mailing out of whack, and that slows everything down a little bit. The bigger concern that we've got, I think we can manage around that by moving especially the bills that are due on the first of the month, and that's a certain cycle, I'll say cycle nine, because we actually do that. But each month on the first, because of TVA rates, we have to make a rate adjustment, really on the first. So that makes that one a little more complicated. So by shifting the date just a little bit, I think it alleviates some of the pressure we've got. Now, the other thing on the second bill that we've identified, once the due date is passed, the second notice automatically generates, so I mean, that's just part of the system. But you normally give eight to nine days on that, but what we found recently is the mail takes seven days, so we're going to be looking for a better way to get that notice out.
Okay, well, and if we don't use, we have an app, and I haven't downloaded it. I need to do that, and so I'm guilty when I'm pressing technology on everybody else. But, and that will do an instant payment.
Thank you. That's what we're really, that's really what we're trying to do, and I think is to provide the customer more knowledge of when it comes out. So if you go on the website and sign up, we're doing a free app. Basically, it sends an alert, the bill has been issued, you can go and look at what it is, it gives you a due date, it tells you when it's past due and when it's paid, so there's a lot of information that's automatic there. And we found that the newer group, I mean, demographics are changing in our community, they prefer that. That's the way they like to do business on electronic equipment. And we do think that's the safer way of doing it, because some of the bills that we heard too, where is my bill? It was in the mail somewhere between here and our billing group, and it was, that's what it was. Because we knew we could look on our system and see what the amount was, it just hadn't reached that person's standpoint, so. If we could, if we could get more of that out there, it might help us communicate well. But I think the other bigger piece is, give us another month or two, when we finally tie everything together, I think things will even get less complicated, issues will go away, and then I think our internal controls, we're all committed to making sure we don't have errors like that again.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I got one, Mayor. I'm glad you mentioned about that date in there, because the first and the third, when you got them people with their fixed income on the first and the third, and they're missing that date, and I'm glad you're missing that date, and I'm hoping we can get some done.
Thank you, Oliver. And that's one of the things we've concerned, because we've got some routes that actually are due on the twenty-fifth, and we're trying to modify that to give them flexibility on their payment, but those are easier to fix than pulling that change in the rate and rebilling right around that first. And so I think over the time, those ten routes may collapse a little bit, because I think we'll have the capability, but we all might need a little bit of shifting as well.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Appreciate it. And then we have next, Mr. Second Kemp, with an update on the Locksley Way multipurpose path extension.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you tonight. Just to give a very brief overview, and I'm joined tonight by Saunders Ramsay, who's the project engineer for this project. This project really dates back to around the end of twenty sixteen, early two thousand seventeen, when we had this idea where we were going to prepare a joint application to MDOT for a transportation alternative project, and it involves three entities, us, Oktobal County, and Mississippi State. Unfortunately, we were unable to be the lead agency on this project, because we had one that was currently already in process, which currently still is, which is the Louisville Street. And MDOT would not allow you to have multiple projects going on at the same time, so we partnered with the county MSU, and so this is actually a county project. However, we are sharing some of the match cost on it, and it obviously impacts us a lot due to its proximity in the city limits. So I'm going to pass it over to Saunders, who is going to give just a brief overview of the project and the timeline of how we got to where we are today, and then also moving forward, and feel free to ask any questions along the way, too.
Thank you, Edward. Again, my name is Saunders with Neil Shaker. Good to see you guys tonight. Thank you for all that you do for our community. Again, this is a project that is funded by MDOT via the Federal Highway Administration's Transportation Alternative Program. So I guess technically, when you dial it all the way up, it comes from FHWA, and MDOT is just working that project. So this is an extension, I guess you go ahead and advance the next slide. This is an extension of the already existing Lynn Lane multi-use path. If you go way back, it had always been planned to go down Locksley Way. Early in the Lynn Lane path, we ran into utility problems, right-of-way issues, and that's why we terminated it at the Montgomery-Locksley Way intersection. So the map here basically shows it's just under a mile, goes due east along Locksley Way, takes a right on Blackjack Road, and terminates at the New Hill State Boulevard. The next thing I'd like to do is just briefly talk about some of the features that'll be in this project. I'm not going to dive into the details of it, and if you want to, at the end, we can go a little bit deeper. The beginning of the project will be very similar to Lynn Lane. It'll be a shared-use path, pedestrians and cyclists. As we, as we go into the, into Locksley Way, we start to see the utility problems, and I'll speak how we're going to rectify that. In addition to the shared-use path, Edward, go ahead, well, we're going to introduce a new smart bus stop just before you get to the veranda. That'll be designed in a way that the pedestrians can access it, the bicycles can access it. There'll be bicycle storage there and places for people to rest as well. So I consider it kind of a node there for multi modes of transportation, if you will. In addition to the smart buses, along the path, we'll provide some rest stops, which will include benches, shade trees, trash receptacles, things that you'd like to see along a multi-use path. Kind of the highlight of this project is how did we overcome the right-of-way and utility issues? Really, the two-way cycle track will be introduced. I know I'm proud to say this, it'll be the first two-way cycle track in the state of Mississippi. So basically, what this does is it allows the cyclist to sail on one side of the street, similar to a multi-use path, but is actually in the paved street and protected by barriers of whip, and also raised barriers to keep traffic from impacting the cyclist. You'll see in this photo here that any time that there's a conflict point with cars, we'll utilize a green traffic pavement that will also have a texture to it, a color to it, and it'll bring, it'll highlight those interactions between different modes of transportation. So real quickly, the timeline, we had hoped to bid this this spring, go to construction this summer, and then be complete in this fall. I've added an example of, go back real quick, sorry, just in Canada, how they've utilized the two-way cycle track. So this, however, when we submitted the project to MDOT, go ahead and go forward, one, in March of two thousand eighteen this year, PSNE Assembly is kind of the document that you hand over to MDOT and say, we're ready to bid it. They noticed something in our documents that FHWA is not familiar with, or MDOT is not familiar with locally, is the two-stage left-turn box. And basically, this occurs when a cyclist is on one side of the street and has to take a left across traffic. It's something that we're proud to introduce in Starkville, it's never been done in the state of Mississippi, it has been done all over the world, we just, we have not done it here, MDOT is not familiar with it. So we had to go through the FHWA approval process. We received that in May. Once we received that in May, that allowed us to go into our final intersection design, which we then coordinated with Edward and Mr. Terry Kemp, on how those, the signals, the future improvements the city are making, if there's signals, how all of those could be coordinated together, and make sure that we didn't have to rip one thing out or change one, depending on which project went first, and we successfully worked through that process. We just received the final PSNE comments from MDOT this month, and as of this morning, we have submitted the final documents to MDOT based off their comments. So next one, so now the updated timeline, as we hope to receive permission to bid in the next thirty to forty-five days, which means that we would go award a contract later this fall. In the MDOT world, the way they do their time allotment, really from like December to February, the contractors basically work for free, because there's so few weather days available. So I went ahead and said that it'll be under construction this spring. Hopefully, we'll get started before that, and I do anticipate it being a summer completion. So it's like ninety, ninety working days, which in the MDOT world is four to five months. So it's another example in California how they utilize the two-way cycle track, and I just, I think it's a very good example of taking a struggle, which is limited right-of-way and poor utility situation, and coming up with a very creative solution to move that path forward.
So just clarification, will the bike lanes also have a walking path, or will that be separate?
So the, so the walking path or the multi-use path will begin at Montgomery Street, and as you go in front of the church, it'll stay kind of the multi-use path, pedestrians and cyclists. Once we pass the church or the church driveway, we kind of, that's where we start crunching down in space. We're going to move the bikes into the street, okay, but we all, we will have a pedestrian sidewalk at the back of curve, and that really has to do with the width requirements for the multi-use path. It require eight, or ten feet with a two-foot clearance, and just from about that neighborhood, Sherwood Commons, past kind of a veranda on down there, it's just, there's not enough room to meet those requirements. And so we'll actually separate that. We'll have a five-foot sidewalk and then an eight-foot protected bike lane.
At what point will it rejoin? Will it stay separate all the way down to?
So just before you take a ride on Blackjack Road, we'll bring the bikes back on to the multi-use path, and as it goes down Blackjack Road, it'll be a multi-use path. We have taken into account future Blackjack Road widening plans, so you'll see maybe, like Lynn Lane might be a little closer to the street, this path will be much further off the road in preparation for a future Blackjack widening project.
Question?
I've got, yeah, I've got some planners on Pride Street that you can use as providers if you need them.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
I think it looks great.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions? Any discussion?
I would just say, thanks for the update. I knew it takes a process. I appreciate all the work going into this, and excited that when we make those decisions for adopting NACTO ordinance, that it leads to projects like this, being the first in the state, which I think says something, but I think more than anything, what it means is we're creating much improved pedestrian connection from both the university all the way to the sports complex, really working to build an integrated pedestrian infrastructure that is going to make people moving around the city much easier, gives us some spines to work off of. So very excited for this project to move forward.
Along with the Louisville project.
Well, the kind of last slide, just saying thank you. I had a photo of the, basically Starkville being the best place to live in Mississippi, and I think projects like this are why we get that thing, and we're being proactive, being creative, and finding creative solutions to kind of stand out from everybody else. So thank you guys for your support.
Thanks for the updates.
Thank you very much. That's great. They are the best place to live in Mississippi. Okay, moving along, under Department of Business, we have planning.
Same move.
Okay, I have a motion for approval, Oliver Walker, of the night market. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Oliver Little.
I'm sorry, Oliver Carver, I apologize, that was you.
Ma'am, I was going to ask the lady for partnership, if you wanted to say anything, did you want to get up and say anything? Okay, yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, I'm sorry. All right, motion from Oliver Carver, second from Oliver Little. Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of five to two, motion carries. Second item is approval.
Same move.
Mayor, before you go to number two, is that, is that one approved? I saw the beverage, that's approved. Mr. Attorney, with the alcohol, this is other board's approval?
Correct, it was a part of the written application.
Okay, I just want to make sure the record is clear. Thank you.
The next one is the special event for the Pink Heels. I think I heard Oliver Carver, did I hear you again?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I have a motion from Oliver Carver, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Oliver Walker. Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
By a vote of five to two, motion carries.
Chief, do you still have that pink car somewhere?
[laughing]
Out of five, or just hasn't seen it around?
All right, we have a special event request, in this case from Ms. Bush, for the Mad Mothers Against Domestic Disputes. I have a motion from Oliver Carver.
Same.
I have a second from Oliver Miller. And we do have, I believe, Ms. Bush, we have a change, I believe. Would you come forward and let us know about that, please, ma'am? My recollection is that you did not originally ask for a street closure, is that correct?
I did ask for a street closure.
You did?
We did get it resolved today, Ms. Embly and Mr. Rafferty.
Okay, my understanding was that the original application didn't show that, so I want to make sure we're very clear on what it is that we have, that we're asking for and that you're getting, so that we don't have any confusion when it comes time for the end.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board. Originally, we, Ms. Bush came with a community day for a 5K walk.
Right.
Along with her event, required a street closure, conflicted with another event, walked into Alzheimer's that was occurring on the same day, limited manpower through chiefs to see if we could talk to Ms. Bush, possibly push the time back. During that discussion, we were under the impression that there would not be any street closures due to not being a 5K.
Okay.
I've just spoken to Ms. Bush this evening, as we were coming in, I believe the street closures, Pilcher Street.
Pilcher?
Pilcher Street, just in front of the, Jaden.
That's West Side, is that West Side?
Let me know my right street name, make sure.
Yeah.
Pilcher Street. Jaden's right down in front of the park, on the south side of the park, where the parking area is.
Okay, I thought that was West Side, but whatever that street is, so is it from the top of the hill down to the stop sign?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, was there a map that was included in that?
Did not have a map on this, other than the 5K.
Okay.
That we agreed to during the RC meeting, not have that go over.
Okay, so next time, we'll just make sure that map shows it, but okay, so everyone's clear?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent, okay. Just wanted to make sure everybody knew what was going on. All right, so I have a motion and I have a second. Did you want to say anything else? I just wanted to clear up the street closure issue.
In your brochure, you should find a letter from myself, talking about asking for permission to get a permit for beverage.
Yes, ma'am, that was included, I believe that was included in the permit.
Oh, was it? Okay.
There was, yes, yes, yeah, so it was included in the permit.
Okay.
Yeah, and so that is something that I have a question. I am going to support this event. We just passed events in Fire Station Park that are to support thi- this event, we, we just passed events in Fire Station Park that are going to have that same opportunity, so I, I would absolutely extend that to, to this event in JL King Park. I do think it's worth a, the discussion point, one being Fire Station Park is significantly smaller in size, and it's essentially fenced in around that. Would, would you be, for, for this event, would you be willing to, to, to have that area where the beverage is going to be contained to where the actual event is and not throughout the park? For example, where you're going to have the road closed from the pavilion, the softball field, the parking area by the splash pad, that's typically where the event itself is held, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I, I would say, just from a policing standpoint, and being able to look at that, if, if we could limit, and I believe the language in the city attorney might can help me, if we can limit the, the allowable accessible to alcohol within the confine, within the confines of the event boundary, as opposed to the entirety of the park boundary, I think we're going to run into this issue when we, if something happens at the sportsplex, or we do it somewhere else, where we're combining the, the ability to serve or consume an alcoholic beverage inside where the event is being held proper. Does that make, does that make sense?
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Uh, well, would you afford Oliver to, Vice Mayor Perkins? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, certainly, I'm going to be consistent, not going to vote for it, but Mr. Attorney, what we need to do is, in my legal opinion, of, of course, it's to say that I'm going to be consistent, but it seems like the board is drawing a distinction on how applicants that are similarly situated treated differently. And of course, I just, you know, if the board is going to have a history of doing that, they need to treat all persons who are similarly situated similarly, of course, and it's my consistency, not to support this, not going to vote for this, but it seems like, you know, that's what happens when you open the door, when a certain applicant comes, don't try to draw a distinction here. You know, when the Clydesdale horses came, you know, you didn't make no distinction, when the Pumpkin Pelusa come here, you don't make no distinction. Of course, I'm not advocating, I don't, I don't think any of this should be allowed, but, but you know, when applicants come, do not use a particular situation to draw a distinction, when you're not going to treat all of them alike. But, you know, if we're going to deny it for one, or do one that way, we need to have a, a policy that's going to do that, that's why to vote for the special events policy tonight, because of, you know, how things are done, because the other matters, you know, you have the applicants being, having unlimited use of areas, but when this applicant come up, you know, we want to confine the area, you know, we want to tell them what to do, and, but when the fire station, you know, they just, well, we just approve it in a very broad way, but I don't, but my point is, to the media and to the public, by no means I am saying I'm in favor of this. The message that I'm saying, when persons come before this board, we need to treat them fair and equally. The Equal Protection Clause lawyer, you will know, you're, you're a very capable constitutional lawyer, of the Fourteenth Amendment says that person that are similarly situated should be treated similarly, we can't show no difference in the treatment, so let's not try, try to draw a distinction and treat these people differently because of, of certain locations and, and certain other factors, so I think it's, the record is real clear here from a legal point of view, that, you know, that there's some different treatment, you know, we just had an application for the, and I'm sure the gentleman from, the professor means well, that they're a learned colleague down there, but the, the Greater Starkville Partnership just had it, got approved, the horses came in, got approved, the, the shrimp boars, or whatever you call the catfish boil, all that out there in these various places throughout the city, get approved, then we get up here tonight, when this applicant come, well, where they going, where they going to do this at, where they going, where this is going to happen, where this is going to happen at? You know, let's not show very overt and revealing difference in the treatment, you know, we have to, the Constitution of this state, in the United States of America, states that under the Fourteenth Amendment, that person that is similarly situated have to be treated similarly, not differently. So, I'm taking the time on this, this is not for this one issue, but for other issues that may arise. So, I'd be very careful when you, when you draw that distinction, when you're talking about the same subject matter, Mr. Attorney, you, you get my point?
I do, may I respond by saying?
Yes, sir.
I completely agree with you.
Okay.
Three more. The, the ordinance says that the open containers will be allowed within the boundaries of an outdoor special event or festival upon written application, so how the special event or festival is drawn in the application controls, and the open containers are allowed within that boundary. So, so right now, we've got a, we've got a boundary on record, and open containers are allowed throughout the boundary on the written application. If there needs to be an amendment to this, if it's the board's desire, then the written application needs to be amended to curtail that boundary, but right now, the written application boundary would control.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, but you know, I understand the policy, I understand what the boundaries are, what I'm saying is, is that all of a sudden, we get down to this applicant, then we got to sit here and talk about where they can partake with what is allowable?
I agree with you.
But, but the discussion prior to this, there was no discussion, so let's just move, you know, either you're going to approve it or not, I mean, and of course, I'm not advocating it, but let's be consistent with how our citizens, regardless of, of, of who that person, or persons are, let's make sure they're treated similarly, you know, when the issues are similar, Mr. Attorney.
I agree.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm going to approve this, and let me say, I'm making no distinction between the fire station and this event based on race or who's coming to this event, that is not my intention at all.
And I didn't say that.
Okay, but, and so, my distinction, I've been to lots of different places, and my distinction in the two locations, from the fire station and JL King Park, is totally nothing to do with who's going to be there, other than just the size of the park itself, that's the distinction. As an example, when you go to Taste of Chicago in Millennium Park and in Grant Park in Chicago, the entirety of the park isn't opened up, the special, where the special event is, is clearly defined within that park, and that's where the, the festivities and, and the alcohol serving and all that can happen. I am totally okay if we want to open it up to all of JL King Park, I'm like the Vice Mayor, I want to be consistent, I'm going to vote for this. I would say, if that is something that does need to be clarified in the policy, to say if it's going to be in JL King Park, or if it's going to be in the sportsplex, those are huge parks, I think it makes a lot of sense, from a public safety standpoint, that that be confined to wherever the boundaries of that special event. It has nothing to do with whether it's the partnership running it, or whether it's you, Ms. Bush, running this, and so, if my comments in any way implied that I'm trying to treat you differently based on that, that was not my intention. The intention was that the park sizes themselves are really apples and oranges, all right, in terms of the size, and that's the only comment that, that I'll have about that. I do think that as we move forward, I think the, if the language in the, the policy says what is mapped as the special event, I think that gives us the opportunity as a board to say, serving of alcohol is going to be confined to that, that way, if somebody else is using the park, and they want to be at the soccer field or walking on the track, and they don't want to be able to do that, I think that's okay. It's not any different than if you're at the, the festival in the Cotton District, when you leave that boundary, you are outside of that event, and you can't have an open container. And so, that was, that, that was the only point, I bring that up. If that language isn't clear, and we need to make that be the entirety of the JL King Park, I'm fine with that, make the motion, somebody's already made it, I will support that. I just thought that that might be a worthy point of discussion, because when I've attended the event, which is always fun, it seems that primarily where the actual event is, is the parking lot, the pavilion, the softball field, and the areas immediately around that, and there's still plenty of people using the park that may not be part of your event specifically.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Well, wait, if you would please, Oliver Vaughn.
I wasn't going to say it, but I was going to keep my mouth closed.
I'm sorry?
But I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm going to keep my mouth closed, but you might need to barricade Mosley, that'll keep you from Long Street, block Mosley off, unless you come in down, unless you come in, your vendor's coming in, because you, because normally, that's what you normally do, and you know, what you're talking about, you're talking about, but normally, she would have to change those thick of things, you know, because the whole park, because it's not enough parking, so they park some on the other field over there, and then they park on the back of it, so you just about use the whole park, but...
That's fine, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that, I just, I just, I think as we move forward, now, like you said, I agree with the Vice Mayor, we've opened up this to allow these things to happen, which I think is, I'm okay with that move, I just think in our bigger parks, sportsplex and JL King, I think, I think we have the opportunity to sort of refine what that area where we're allowing this to do, not, not unlike we do in any of the, the other places, based on nothing more than just the size of the park or the size of where the event's going to be, not who's there, or who's putting it on, or who's running.
I'm going to recognize the city attorney, he's been willing to weigh in.
Board, the way the application is drawn right now, it encompasses the whole park, and if y'all accept the condition of the street closure to Pilcher, then it would also encompass Pilcher, so that, that's what's on, on the table now.
So, streetwise, Pilcher, you, you wanting Pilcher, and the remainder of what, is West Side closed, is that correct?
It was Pilcher and JW Mosley.
Just that Mosley.
Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll note that on there, so, is that a friendly amendment, who's got, who's got the, Oliver Carver, acceptable to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, so I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
And Mayor, there are three conditions, if you look at the staff report, one is proof of insurance, required thirty days before October 12th, so we'll need to have that as a condition, in addition to the street closures of Pilcher and Mosley.
Okay, Mr. Chuck, should have emailed the, what's his name, Mr. Buddy, he's not in, he would, he resigned.
Mr. Sanders?
Yeah, he did say he contacted Mr. Sanders, but he resigned, so he's trying to find out, who do he send the...
He can send, he can send it to me, or he can send it to Ms. Corbin or Mr. Havel.
What is this?
Insurance?
Insurance, yes, it was a, it was a quote, so it's not the insurance policy, I'm responding with the standards from what Mr. Lattler gives me on the indemnification call, now I'm ready to back.
We'll, we'll follow up on that.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Anything further? All right, we'll have it, have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, by a vote of five to two, motion carries, we're getting down to the end, guys.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Sorry, y'all, it stays so long. I know y'all got cold, but sorry, y'all, it stays so long, it's cold up in here.
All right, this is a consider, discussion consideration of a variance eighteen dash zero five, and Mr. Havel and Ms. Corbin coming forward, and applicant, Mr. Pepper, are you in the back for the applicant? Okay, you want to come a little closer to the front, because we're probably going to get you to come up here and clarify some stuff, so if you'd just be available, please, sir? Okay, this is what was tables at the last board meeting, I believe, and they went through DRC again for a little further clarification, y'all want to run through this quickly, please?
This is a request I filed against Sanya Reeves from a variance from the street width requirements and street dedication requirements for proposed condominium development located on the east side of Lewisville Street at the intersection of Linden Circle in a C1 and R5 zone. There are two parts to this request, request number one is relief from the requirement to make all roads public on a condo development over two acres in size, the applicant is requesting to have a private road with a security gate. Request number two is relief from the required street width of thirty-one feet, the applicant is proposing a twenty-foot width. On July twenty-fifth, twenty-eighteen, the Board of Adjustments Appeal voted four to one to recommend approval of both requests. Twelve property owners of record who have interfered with the subject property were notified directly by mail of the request, a public hearing was noticed in the Starkville Daily News on July tenth, twenty-eighteen, and a sign was posted on the property concurrent to publication of the notice. As of this date, the planning office received no phone calls against this request. On August sixteenth, twenty-eighteen, the Development Review Committee met to discuss the pre-application for this development, this was the second meeting. The Fire Department had general questions about fire hydrant layout, turning radiuses, and gate access. They are requiring that the street width be a minimum of twenty feet wide with no parking. Starkville Utilities Water and Sewer will need more detail going forward to determine how the utilities will be served and responsibility to maintain utilities. Starkville Utilities Electric will require ten-foot utility easement along any street, public or private, and will not allow for the project to be mastered immediately. There's also been two requests from the staff, request number for conditions, one is vehicular access gate, shall be automatic opening type with no required access code, and shall remain accessible at all times. Number two, a permissive use agreement for sanitation department, shall be required, it shall include a release, indemnification, and a hold harmless agreement. In addition to that, in the updated staff report, we have included the criteria for variance for, from condominium requirements, and I guess the test, as Mr. Lattler recalled, would be the area that is underlined, under number one, A through D.
Okay, thank you. All right, while they're, while they're here, any questions of them at this point in time? Okay, and at the, at the DRC meeting, one of the things that was, that was discussed was options and concerns about sanitation truck getting through and the fire truck getting through, and the narrowness of the street, I was concerned, in particular, that with, with this being condominium, with these being private streets, that you would have parking on both sides, which would impede the ability for either one of those larger vehicles to get through, and with the thought that a one-way street with parking on only one side of the street would be something that would allow those vehicles to be able to make it through that, and so, I was hoping that this board would see that and perhaps make that a part of that requirement. Mr. Pepper, does the, does applicant have any issues with making it one-way and having parking on only one side?
No, we, the, as far as we're concerned, there will be no parking on the street and condo dogs, so, and that's what we intend for, no parking.
Well, and intense in what ends up happening?
I understand, no, one-way is fine, we just didn't know if we had to go through a second variance process for that, I never got an answer.
And I don't, and I don't think that's necessarily the case, this is more of a, the board can approve that as a condition or whatever, so...
Is that what you're saying?
That's fine, yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Walker, did you have a?
No, that was, I, I think that I was going to make that a condition as well, I think if it's one-way, when, when I think in our language, if we do add limited to parking on one side of the street, and then if the condo document says no parking, then that's fine too, but I think from our standpoint, I think it, it'll protect, to make sure that city services could, could get down the street. The, the one question I do have related is a policing, a related matter to policing, if, if that street does become blocked with cars parked and city services can't get through, and the, the residents who live there are, they're not going to, they're not going to probably call you, they're going to call up here and say, "My trash didn't get picked up today." And how, are we going to have the ability to, to write a ticket on a private street, or how are we going to?
We are willing to give, however this works, permission to police the neighborhood, they, these, we have worked this out in other neighborhoods, but I do not know all the legalities, to give the police permission to enter and ticket, enforce any speed limits, whatever they want to do on the property.
I don't know the answer to that either, city attorney?
I think they would have the rights under the police power to do what they needed to do for the health sake and welfare of the municipality, but we could also add a permissive use agreement for them, in addition to sanitation, and just tie it all up.
We're willing to do that, please.
Okay, and this is preliminary, y'all haven't settled on what's going to happen, this is just, this is what you're looking at?
No, this was a, just a sketch of how we could get traffic flow through the property.
Do you have any other things you want to convey to the board while you're here, half of the applicant?
The gate is no security code, nothing needed, stop, you're photographed, the gate opens, that's it, there's no key, key code, PIN number, anything.
So, if you want your picture taken, you can go to that gate?
You can go to that gate and get your picture taken.
Okay, all right, any other questions? Other questions or concerns? Okay, do I have a motion?
Same move, Mayor.
I have a motion from Oliver Little, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Oliver, this is strong.
I just want to clarify, is that adding the condition of the one-way, one-way street, and I think the city attorney is working on language for the... The, the permissive use, language would be a permissive use agreement for sanitation, police, and fire, so that they would be able to serve the property as needed, which shall require a release, waiver, indemnification, and hold harmless provision.
Okay.
One-way street, one side parking.
Correct.
So, does it cover anything on the rest of it?
That's your, that's your motion, okay, and second, Oliver... That's your, that's your motion? Okay. And, uh, second from Alden Sistro. You can do that. Okay. Any further discussions? Oh, Alden Miller, I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Pepper, and I just wanted to let you know and applicant, uh, and I wanna give my reasoning. Um, I'm gonna vote against this tonight, just after sleeping on it since the last meeting. Um, mainly just because I, I do think it's such a precedent, and I think ultimately it does make things difficult on, or providing basic city services. However, I think the development's great. I think that what they're doing, y'all are doing over there is wonderful, and I fully support that. So I hope you, hope you know that, but, um, I won't be able to support the variance.
If you've looked at the landowner, we're surrounded by public city school. So this is a dead end.
Right.
Dead end development.
Alright, thank you. Anything further? Alright, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I have a vote of six to one, motion carries. Alright, claim stocket.
Blue pro.
My motion from Alden Little. Do I have a second? I'm sorry?
I have a, 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 I
How much you say it's going to cost to fix it?
Oh, no, not how much it's going to cost to fix it. We have spent over a hundred and twelve thousand dollars on it.
And reason, I emphasize that point, because I remember real clearly, I think Grantham was the chief then.
Yes, sir.
During the Camp administration, we went down there and we had the dedicator service on it, and you know, some of the, we got way all up on it, looking on it, and, and you know, this becomes a reality when you start talking about it. It just takes me back, you know, in time when I hear about it. I'm not giving you a hard time, I'm just trying to reflect back on it. And ladder number one, we've gotten all the life out of that vehicle, a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar vehicle.
Actually, I think it was eight hundred and fifty.
Well, I'm close to it.
Yes, sir, close to it.
That's thirteen years of memory there, but you know, I mean, I thought we, I thought it still should be, I thought we still should have some life left in it, but I guess you know, you're the chief, you know.
Yes, sir, I thought we would, too, but last three years, about seventy-four thousand dollars spending, getting it fixed, and just really putting money in it that we shouldn't have put in.
Okay, thank you, Chief, thank you.
Kind of current vehicle list, we got engine three, I highlight the engine three and engine five, those are ones we just bought three years ago, I think two years, they've been running, no problems at all. Say, over the last six years, we've spent a lot of money on the truck. Since two thousand thirteen, a hundred, a little over a hundred and twelve thousand dollars on maintenance and repair. Like I mentioned earlier, this doesn't take into account the repairs that firefighters completed at no cost to the city. Some of the current issues, the actual ladder is not operating correctly, so if we had to use it, we could, but it would take a few minutes to get it set up. And there's no question, you know, it may work today and may not, so. It's broken down.
Chief, I want to.
Do you have recognition, Mr. Mayor? Certainly.
Thank you for reminding me, Mayor, I appreciate that. I want to follow the protocol, thank you, I sure do, thank you very much. Chief, I mean, ask you these questions here. Yeah, yeah, I want recognition, but yeah, Chief, what I want to say is that, yeah, we need to make sure that we have that truck with the ladder operating very correctly. And I'm very supportive of doing that, because you know, there was a lot of attention, and you're doing a great job, it was just a friendly conversation, you know, a lot of attention that we have that ladder truck, because it not only help in our city, but also with the university.
Right.
A lot of attention, and that, we got to do something, because that ladder, I mean, that is the vehicle that, for these high-story fires. So you know, I mentioned saying a plan at some point, which you know, you're always doing a very scholarly way, bringing those things to us, I'm going to be very supportive within our revenue stream to do that. So you know, whatever funds that are available in your land item with restricted fire funds, I would certainly support it without any, you know, tax increase, but, but I, you know, just bring that forward, and because we got to have that ladder truck working right, because you know, there's talk about, we can, you know, we even sent that ladder truck down to Walther. Remember that? Down in that big old historic courthouse out, about nine miles out on Highway Nine, when it caught on fire, you got, you, the staff got the permission from the, you know, the city hall to take that truck out there, and it's helped out a lot of ways, and we got to have that ladder truck working. And I remember when your department came forward with all that, the only reason I'm talking, I'm not trying to prolong it, it's, the hour's kind of late, but I just want to make sure, that's a very important discussion you mentioned, because I remember when it came to us, the history and overall purpose of the truck, so I'm fully supportive of that, Chief, and I'm sure the other board members, but I just want to highlight that, because I just, you know, I remember when it rolled in here and the purpose that it's fulfilled, so just, whenever you have a plan, I'm going to do whatever I can to support you on it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Over the last couple of months, it's broken down twice, one being on Spring Street and one being on one eighty-two. The major issue with that truck, nobody wants to haul it, it's too big. It's too big to be towed. Bulldog towed it one time for us, but it's too big, so we had to actually use the mother truck to pull it to the station port here. It's pretty embarrassing, the truck being put on the road, had to get PD involved to block the roads off, to pull the fire truck. So had it been on Highway Twelve, gone across the highway, major intersection, it'd have broken down, shut traffic down, so. Continue to have major mechanical issues, so we're at the point now where we very set and dry. If we need it, we will for a structural fire, something like that, but other than that, we kind of stay away from it. And also, we, there's been impelling Alabama, three times over the last three years. Pelham is actually where the company is that services that truck, has been over there state over there for two months, and one time they came back, it didn't get back to Starville, and then always was messing up again, so we got to figure out something to do. The mayor asked me about this a couple of weeks ago, why our platform? Why do we need such a big truck in the city of Starville? Number one, rescue operations. We have high-rise buildings in the city and where Mississippi State. Also, we have rope rescue that we could run into that, we ran into that at the Jumbotron that day. Large water supply. Take example of Crossgate, the fire we had at Crossgate, we couldn't have got that fire, we would have got it out, it took a while to do it, but with the large water supply, we got it out a lot quicker, just for that. Safer evacuation for young and elderly victims. If we did have something, we had to evacuate people, that platform is going to be a lot safer to get people onto the platform than that. A better surface to work on when performing rescue operations, bending roofs or setting firefighters down the roof. Currently, if we have a structural fire, we have to sit firefighters, we have, excuse me, have a ladder to put firefighters on, to cut a hole in the roof. The only thing about that is dangerous if they fall through the roof, so this right here allows us to sit the firefighters on the roof, cut from a safe place, and keep them safe. It's essential for Mississippi State fire operations, but we also utilizing the city as much as MSU, so just as much we use it at MSU, we use it for the city. Pretty much every structural fire we go to, we take it in case we need to elevate the red ladder to spray water, like I said, with Crossgate, one of those apartment complexes. And we also have ladder districts. If we don't have a ladder truck, it's going to impact our rating if we have proper number areas. We're supposed to have at least two, according to state raiding bureau, and we have two right now. Like I said, one is not working correctly. So preliminary recommendations would be replace ladder one. Starfire department, because we'd like the city, either MSU, to purchase the apparatus out of the general fund, depending on, maybe with a bond, or, we right now are currently trying to get a grant, which we never know how this is going to turn out. Currently, we are purchasing the engine three and engine five with our state rebate funds, so. Of course, we get those in every June. That's what we use to pay for ladder, engine three and engine five. We can utilize a fifteen-year lease purchase agreement, which allows the city to lay the first payment to the twenty-twenty budget. And then we can use a lot of the company by the name of Brindley Mountain to sell ladder one. If this board will, we can take those funds and kind of offset the payments on the new ladder truck. And then oil the truck soon because of price increases, because of tariffs. After September twelfth, the price is going to increase from four point five to six percent because of the tariffs on steel. And these are just some cost estimations, kind of on the high side, but just want to make sure we get everything covered. Truck been around one point five million. We did ten years, and you can kind of see the breakdown.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Now, what, now, what'd you say the average life expectancy, what should we expect out of a ladder truck? Ten years, fifteen years?
Fifteen to twenty years.
Was this just a dud that we've got?
Yes, that's what the.
Has it been a lemon?
Yeah.
That's what I was curious, it's, it's been problems for a while.
It's been problems for, since two thousand six. It came into.
All right, so one point five million is the, is going to be the cost of the next ladder truck?
Right.
And how many, how many, what is our percent of cost at MSU?
Forty, about forty-one percent.
Forty-one percent?
Right.
And one other question, the only platform, is a ladder truck, well, is the platform part of the ladder truck, is that the hundred-foot element of that, is that, is it the only size truck that has a platform?
No, we can get a seventy-eight foot plat, we could get a seventy-eight foot platform.
As opposed to a hundred?
Right.
Okay. But your preference would be the hundred-foot because of the MSU height?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any questions, Chief? Alden Little?
What's the, I apologize, you might have already said this, but what's the history on how we previously paid for this truck?
We paid for it, my understanding was state, general funds.
Well, MSU bought this one for us, that ladder truck for us, did they not? Isn't that the one that MSU, Vice Mayor, is that not the one that MSU purchased for us?
No, I think, MSU purchased engine four.
Okay, all right. I knew they had bought one.
Is it, is it time for them to buy another one?
Alden Sistro?
Can I jump in and say, yes, probably, but twenty-twenty, that contract with MSU expires, and so we probably, I hope we're not ordering a truck tonight, but you're just, you're giving us some good information, but I think there's some conversations that probably need to be had about the, about that contract and what their responsibilities are. In the original contract with MSU, and I'd like to see the latest amendment, they're also supposed to be responsible for maintenance of the truck.
Well, and I don't know if we can pull that, certainly, there are several things that they provide us as a part of that, a part of that contract, so. We can get that, I can get that to the board. I'll make a note of that. Let's get that contract to the board, so everybody can see it. Alden Miller, you, sorry, somebody else?
What other money does Mississippi State provide?
Funds to assist the fire.
Yeah, I mean, has the biggest contribution been the, I know we're, we were saying they didn't pay for this one, I'm just talking about in general, moving forward, the twenty-twenty truck engine. What do they provide?
They, well, they also provide us salary for one fire marshal.
Okay.
And I don't know beyond that. Again, we'll pull those contracts and the amendments and send them out.
Mayor, I'd like to yield to the budget chair, she had a.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
I was sticking my hands up. Under the, under the interlocal agreement, they do make a flat payment to us, and it is increased from seventy-four thousand dollars in nineteen eighty-eight, when we originally began this, and it's about two hundred and twenty that they pay us now.
Two ninety-five.
Two ninety-five.
I think the last, it goes up every year, three years.
That's more than I remember.
Sorry, I didn't realize, I knew it was cash, I didn't realize that that was the question, I was thinking those accessory elements that they give us.
I'm done, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any?
I just had, briefly, Chief, thanks for bringing this, and I know y'all have had a lot of trouble with that, that truck. What is the, what is the difference in cost estimate one and cost estimate two?
Cost estimate two, kind of the same plan. The only difference with this one is, the first payment due would be sixty thousand dollars, around sixty thousand, which would be just the taxes.
Interest.
And then you could extend it out for one, another year, so first, first option, the payment would be due twenty nineteen, second option, the payment, sixty thousand dollars be twenty nineteen, and then the full payment would be due twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alden Sistro?
Two eighty-one.
Two eighty-one, okay.
Is coming here, yeah.
I guess I do have one more, Mayor, if I can be recognized.
Sure.
Chief, if we do go this route and we decide we want to try to sell this ladder truck, do you have any idea what, what approximate rate that we might be able to get for that truck?
I, it's, right now, they're actually doing their estimates. He told me somewhere around two hundred thousand and above, so.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have to give a warranty?
Do we have to give a warranty?
We're not going to.
All right, thank you, Chief, appreciate it. Mr. Logan? Consideration of Parks Recreation Department program, including a trip to Branson, Missouri for the dates December the tenth through the thirteenth, twenty eighteen.
Overapproval.
I have a motion from Alden Little. Do I have a second?
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, your name?
Board, I might suggest holding off on this if timing's not a critical issue for two reasons. Number one, they did provide a general commercial liability insurance certificate, but they provided it at four fifty-four P.M., so I don't know exactly everything in the certificate or if it's going to truly apply to this, to this outing. Secondly, the materials in the packet relate to travel service for another city in the state, and I'd love to see materials related specifically to Starville, so we see how this is going to work. I don't know if this is a timing issue or not.
And just to clarify and be sure everyone kind of knows what we're doing, that our role in this is basically purely promotions. This is a company I've had experience with in previous, in a previous city, and it's an opportunity to be positively associated with a program, basically. The participants would take a trip to Branson, and it's a facilitated trip, essentially. We, we don't hold or keep the money, the company does, so our role is strictly promotions. And to the, the specific itinerary, that, the one that was provided, as an example, was a different city, that's because it's, we would be following the exact same itinerary, just the next week. So they, they provided that as a sample instead of a specific one to us, but it, it would basically be literally identical to the one, to the itinerary before, just the following week. And then the insurance certainly be dug into a little bit more, just to see what it looks like.
Is timing an issue?
Purely promote, it's just less time to promote if we do decide to move forward, so.